Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to remind the public that we will resume on this platform at 7:00 PM. We will now be going into executive session and we look forward to seeing you shortly. Thank you.
Hey Maria, is everything working?
Thank you, Paul. You sound good. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maria. Have a good evening.
You too.
Maria, I'll follow suit with Paul. Is everything okay?
You sound great.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else want to try their sound while I'm here?
Hi Maria, it's Nikki.
Thank you, Nikki. Sound good? I anticipate. Hi, who's there?
Kelly.
Hey Kelly, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I guess while we're at it, let me test my flag.
Oh, hi Kim. Okay, Homer, I'm going to stop sharing then, so you can test your flag. Is that what you would like to do?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. Give me a moment. I do.
Okay, you can have a mic.
Thanks. Hi Christine? And Tracy?
Hi Maria, it's Tracy G.
Sounds good, thank you.
Maria Renzetti.
Yeah, thank you. You sound great.
Maria, do you intend to be sharing your screen right now? Okay.
I do. I'm waiting for the council members to return.
No worries, we could just see your email account, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi Maria, it's Lindsay. I just wanted to see if you could hear me okay?
Lindsay, I think she's been stepping away for a minute at a time, so hang in there.
Well, no problem. It sounds like you can hear me, so that's good.
I think you sound great. You sound great, Lindsay.
Awesome. Audio check complete.
I see that Julie Rinaldi is on.
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening. You sound good, too.
Thank you.
Testing, Maria. This is Bob.
We hear you, Bob. I'm not Maria.
Oh, cool. Thanks.
And Heather. Heather is the other person speaking from my neck of the woods. So Heather, could you try your mic?
Hi. Are you okay?
Try that again.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Great. See you in a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Christine, which one of us would you like us to, would you like to start?
Doesn't matter. I'll call up, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Thanks.
Hey Maria, we're looking at your email address again.
I apologize, Homer. I've been on another line with a member of Cardinal trying to get them onto the meeting, and so I may have missed what you just asked me.
Yeah, you're, you know, you're sharing your, your email.
Oh, my email, again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Maria, it is 7 o'clock. Do we have everyone?
Hello. Yes, we do.
Okay. I will reconvene the April 12th Dublin City Council meeting. Good evening and welcome to our regular city council meeting. In these current conditions of pandemic, we are allowed by the state legislature to conduct our public meetings virtually and to maintain the city, the safety of all council city staff and, most importantly, residents. We can access the live stream on the city's website or YouTube channel. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to city council by our communications and public information staff during this evening's meeting. It is important that we accommodate public participation and to the greatest extent possible, and we welcome your comments on public business. Please refrain from inappropriate comments. Your patience is certainly appreciated. At this time, I'd like to ask Homer Rogers to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Maria, I need the share button, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I would like to inform you that Mr. Walker, I've been having some difficulties getting his ability to join us. I know that he is coming up very soon on the agenda. Just continue to work with him to allow him to join our meeting.
Thank you. We will go ahead and have our National Volunteer Week presentation proclamation first then, and I believe that Christine Nardekia is with us.
I am.
Welcome. There you are. Welcome and thank you as we celebrate National Volunteer Week. I think you have some items for us.
Well, I have some incredible guests here if they want to pop up on video. Tonight, we have Dinky Youngstead Parish from the Dublin Food Pantry, Jill Cransterber and Sarah Savage from Dublin Neighborhood Bridges, Julie Erwin Rinaldi from Centaro and Heather Hines of the Welcome Warehouse. So, members of council, thank you so much for recognizing volunteer engagement during National Volunteer Week. And as you know, we serve an incredible community that springs into action whenever there are needs or innovative projects we want to try. But this past year in particular, our volunteer engagement has been a bit different, but it was still very robust and impactful and continues on. And the collective effort of our nonprofit community has come together with the city to make incredible impact on rising needs. So whether it was adopting a family or distributing food or serving a local senior, caring for our mental health and wellness, cleaning up and monitoring parks, donating help, we just want to collectively recognize the power of all community volunteerism and have invited some representatives from nonprofits to accept your proclamation. I believe that Julie Rinaldi from Centaro and Heather Hines from Welcome Warehouse may have something to share. So Julie, I'll invite you to unmute.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. And, you know, just want to thank city council and all the leadership at the city for your support of all the nonprofits in the area. I know you know that we work, we work together pre-pandemic, but I tell you, it's been pretty amazing how collaborative everybody's been during the pandemic to really try to meet everybody's needs and really coming together to do some creative and innovative work together. So I want to thank you for recognizing our volunteers. Nobody volunteers to get recognized, but thank you because it's kind of nice to be recognized and we'll let folks know that, that you are grateful for all the work that they're doing. And just thank you for always being so supportive. It's been a great year and the city actually, working with Christine and her crew through the Dublin Cares efforts, has really been very powerful in pulling everyone together to really think through how do we respond to meet the needs, the growing needs that we've seen over the year. So thank you, and I'll let Heather say a couple words then, but thank you, guys.
Thank you. We also would like to thank the city of Dublin for taking time to publicly recognize all of the amazing volunteers that served our community throughout this year, especially during the pandemic. Last year alone, Welcome Warehouse used hundreds of volunteers and about 80 different partners to help fulfill our mission. The city really played a critical role in bringing all those community leaders together during the pandemic, the first year of it. And we would like to especially recognize Christine Nardekia for facilitating her role with the Dublin Cares meetings. A lot of people don't know, but these meetings really bring all the organizations together to help determine what the critical needs are in the community and what the volunteer opportunities are and so forth. So we'd like to thank all of the volunteers who helped with all of the nonprofits. We'd like to thank the city for bringing everyone together. And, you know, we're just so grateful for you and for the wonderful people who live, work, and volunteer in the city of Dublin.
Thank you, Heather. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our corporate community. We don't have representatives here tonight who, our phone's been ringing off the hook, you know, to say, what can we do? And we've asked them for some very unusual things this year, and they have delivered. So hats off and maybe a good transition into your next agenda item with Mr. Walter. So thanks for the time, council members, and I believe you may have a proclamation to read to all of these wonderful representatives tonight.
I do, and thank you, Christine, and thank all of you for the work that you do on behalf of this community. It certainly hasn't been a year unlike any other. And, you know, the mercy ministries that you all provide, they change what it is like to be in the city of Dublin. And just the compassion and the tenderness that you treat our citizens with in their most, the most desperate times of need is incredibly cheated by all in the community. I do have a proclamation I will read here. Whereas the city of Dublin supports and cultivates volunteer involvement to strengthen citizen engagement, enhance city services, and promote citizen learning. And whereas thousands of our residents, corporate partners, and surrounding community members step forward to volunteer, thereby extending the city of Dublin's scope of services and enriching the fabric of local government. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the Dublin community embraced the needs of the most vulnerable and came to the aid of their city and all nonprofit organizations. Whereas area nonprofits, faith organizations, and school representatives came together to form Dublin Cares to address issues such as isolation, food insecurity, financial hardship, and outreach to neighbors in need. Whereas Dublin City Council recognizes and values the importance of volunteers, students, leaders, and social entrepreneurs, as well as the staff who work with them on a year-round basis. And whereas volunteers of all ages, abilities, backgrounds, and affiliations continue to serve valuable service to our nonprofits, faith organizations, schools, boards, office parks, events, recreation courses, police programs, and community-led initiatives. Whereas volunteers truly reflect the power of reaching out to the people they serve and inspire others to do likewise. Now, therefore, I, Chris Amrose Grooms, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th to April 24th, 2021, as national volunteer work in the city of Dublin. And encourage all residents to acknowledge the contributions made to the quality of life to our community because of the spirit of citizen engagement, Dublin Cares, and all those who come together to make an impact in Ohio. Sign this 12th day of April 2021. So thank you all so much for the extreme value that you add to this.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Okay, next, I believe we are now ready for our Cardinal Health 50th anniversary proclamation.
Hello, Mayor. Mr. Walter has joined us, but I have him only in, only on my phone, so I'll make sure that we can hear him.
Right. We'll take him however we can get him. So that's wonderful. So we have a proclamation here, and I'll read the proclamation first, and then hopefully we can have some discussion, just what this has meant to the community. It reads as follows. Whereas Cardinal Health celebrated its 50th anniversary, January 7th, 2021, by ringing the opening bell for the New York Stock Exchange, making its journey from a local grocery store distributor to number 16 on the Fortune 500 list. And whereas headquartered in Dublin, an Ohio's largest publicly traded company, Cardinal Health was founded by Robert D. Walter in 1971 with the purchase of a grocery wholesaler named Monarch Foods, which eventually became Cardinal Foods in honor of Ohio's state bird and Walter's high school mascot. And whereas Walter would eventually acquire a series of pharmaceutical distributors, realigning Cardinal's primary business with an initial public offering on NASDAQ in 1983 and changing the company's name to Cardinal Health in 1994. And whereas today Cardinal Health serves more than 29,000 pharmacies and more than 10,000 specialty physician offices and clinics in the U.S., works with more than 4,500 sourcing and manufacturing partners throughout the healthcare supply chain, and serves more than 3.4 million U.S. patents directly with more than 46,000 home healthcare products, and by having its medical and pharmaceutical products and services in nearly 90% of U.S. hospitals. And whereas with nearly 50,000 employees worldwide, Cardinal Health will celebrate its golden anniversary with a year of giving back. At least 50,000 hours of volunteer service with employees supporting causes that mean the most to them across four areas: equity, environment, health, and hunger. And whereas Cardinal Health is focused on improving outcomes for customers, partners, employees, and communities in the years ahead by aspiring to be the healthcare's most trusted partner upon its scale and heritage in distribution products and solutions while driving growth in evolving areas of healthcare throughout customer insights, data, and analytics, and focusing its resources on what matters most. Now, therefore, I, Chris Amrose Grooms, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby, Cardinal Health, as an outstanding corporate citizen, congratulate founder Robert D. Walter, CEO Mike Kaufman, and the employees of Cardinal Health on the occasion of its 50th anniversary. Sign this 12th day of April 2021. So thank you so much for being with us. I see several of the Cardinal folks with us. I see Mr. Kaufman here. We are delighted to have you, and what an honor and an accomplishment to have experienced these 50 years. Do you have, do you have anything you would like to say?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll just say a couple words, but first I want to thank you, Mayor, for this time and activity. And I want to thank the council and city manager Dana McDaniel, too, for the recognition. We do really appreciate it. You know, Cardinal is deeply committed to all of the communities in which our employees live and where we do business, but we're really proud to call Dublin our home, and it's my home, too, personally. I live in Dublin, so I'm excited about this. I want to thank you for your continued partnership. And I also want to say now, and, you know, we've had a chance to celebrate our 50th anniversary, which is just amazing. I've had a chance to be here 30 of those 50 years, and it's my pleasure to invite our founder, a friend, and a incredible mentor to me, Mr. Bob Walter, to make a few comments. Bob?
Great. Thank you, Mike. And Mayor, thank you. I'm sorry I'm not there in person to, to thank you, but we appreciate your recognizing Cardinal Health as the company celebrates its history of service to healthcare, to its associates, and to the communities where it operates. This has been a 50-year journey of growth and mature. Four decades ago, my wife Peggy and I brought our three young sons to live in what was then a rather rural village in northwest Columbus. Shortly thereafter, we moved Cardinal's corporate headquarters to Dublin. There were seven of us at that time. Back then, we were all adolescents, and today we've grown up and thrived together, our family, our company, and the city of Dublin. What a wonderful place to raise a family and a business. We've enjoyed and benefited from the spirit of growth and partnership that Dublin fosters. So thank you for that spirit, and let's challenge each other to continue to innovate and grow together. After all, frankly, we're just getting started.
Mr. Walter, those are some really fantastic words, and I tell you, the admiration this community has for you is really, it's unmatched. Your ability to give back and pay forward at the same time is remarkable. I can recall as a small kid, I think it was the mid-'70s, you, we had our first grocery store open in Dublin in Cardinal Foods, right down there where Bridge Park is today. And I can remember going to the, to the opening ribbon cutting. My mom was with the chamber, and she drug us all in tow there. And as you walked through the front door to the left side, there was the service counter. And, you know, at that time, then the people in Dublin could buy groceries without having to go to your wingwork or to Henderson Road. And there's been so many times since that you have been giving forward and back at the same time, and that is an extreme talent. I, I can recall one, one word of wisdom that you gave to me some 18 years ago, and our paths had crossed in business, and you said, be good to everyone you work with because you don't know when your paths are going to cross again. And that has certainly stuck with me over that time.
Yeah. Well, thank you for those words. I was at the grand opening of that supermarket, and we, we ended up building a shopping center with another Dublin partner, who was Dave Thomas. You may remember that. But then, so, yes, we did open our first supermarkets there. So I know you're busy, but I'm going to tell you two things. Just some, some of the council may not know, across the, the parkway right outside our building, which is what's called Abbey Parkway, or no, what's, what's the building, the parkway called?
Emerald Parkway.
Yeah, Emerald Parkway. I'm sorry. Emerald Parkway happened because of a partnership, that connectivity happened because of a partnership between Dublin and Cardinal, and that allowed us to bring, to build that corporate headquarters, which we're very proud of and proud to be in Dublin. And that wouldn't have happened if, if the city hadn't come together with Cardinal and vice versa. Across the street, just out of interest, you'll notice there's a bunch of streets named after, with, with Irish names. Those are all names of family members in my wife's family and in my, my family's home. We have deep roots to Dublin. We love Dublin, and we appreciate what you've done for the city, the community, and certainly Cardinal Health. So thank you.
Well, we thank you for allowing us to partner on this journey, and certainly in Kilalea and McGreevy and all of those wonderful names. Your fingerprints are all over this community, and we are really grateful for the partnership, and we'll strive to continue to be good partners in the years to come.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Kaufman, any final thoughts you'd like to share? Okay, well, have a great evening. I know it's probably quite tempting to stay on for this very robust council meeting we're about to have, but we certainly would understand if you had more pressing matters to attend to.
Take care from all you do. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our third proclamation this evening was going to be to Abby Steiner, and she has, we are going to re-schedule her. She has had some practice schedules changed, something about the Olympics, yada, yada, yada. So she can't be here with us this evening, and we're going to push her out to our next meeting, and we will look forward to seeing her at that point in time. So Abby, we'll look forward to seeing you in a few weeks. Okay, this brings us to citizen comments on our agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. I want to check in with our clerk and with public information to see if we have received any comments through those offices.
Nothing from the clerk's office.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. There are no comments from the website either at this point.
Appreciate that, Lindsay. Okay, our consent agenda this evening contains March 22nd regular meeting minutes. If there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda, please say so now. If not, I will make a motion to approve the consent. If not, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Andy. Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Okay, brings us to second reading public hearing ordinances, ordinance 12-21.
Amendments to the code sections 153.002 and 153.150 through 153.162 regarding the temporary sign provisions of the city of Dublin's zoning code.
Thank you. And our staff report, I believe, is going to be perhaps tagged team by Jenny Roush and Thad Ballgs.
That is correct. Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having us. Yes, I'm here and Thad is here as well. I just have a couple of quick follow-ups based on our conversation at the first reading to highlight for you, which are included in your memo. So council had requested staff to verify that the color provisions for temporary signs are consistent with what are permitted for permanent signs and we have verified that and made sure that the ordinance matches and it does. The second item was related to adding language requiring verification of vacant property for sale or for lease and we have added a provision in the code that requires an applicant to provide that to ensure that there is space to be leased or for sale as they submit for a temporary sign permit for that sign type. And then the second or excuse me, the third part was verifying that we'll provide notification to all temporary sign permit holders that there will be changes and how to manage those moving forward. So we'll give them some proactive information on what to do when their time comes to update and apply for new signs and what those regulations. So with that, I, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance with those modifications.
Thank you. I want to check in with the clerk's office. Have we received any public comments on this ordinance?
We have not.
Right, and Lindsay, have we received any through the website?
I do have one from Brian Griffith. And he lives at 3852 Carberry Drive. His comments are as follows. 153.158J states that residential sale and leasing signs are subject to 153.153 and 153.154, which among other prohibitions prohibit off-premises signs, signs in the right-of-way, signs on public property, signs which interfere with vehicle or pedestrian traffic. 153.158J3 then states signs off-premises signs may not interfere with vehicle and pedestrian traffic and may not be located in street medians, but these obligations are already contained in 153.154. It is unclear how 158J is attempting to modify or amend the prohibitions in 153 and 154. Furthermore, nothing in 158J expressly permits a sign in a residential area as prohibited by 154F. I recommend replacing the text of 158J3 to read, quote, "Placement such signs may be placed on a property for sale or lease within a residential area." Also in 153.158J4, there is no practical limitation on the duration of such signs. Some residential property may be actively for sale or for lease for years at a time. Perhaps a limit of 180 days in any 24-month period or similar would help limit the number of unnecessary signs.
Great, thank you, Lindsay. Jenny, I'll let you address those.
Great, yeah, so I had, thankfully, we had the opportunity to hear these ahead of the meeting and I had a chance to check in with Thad and he can chime in as well and review the comments that were made. And ultimately, I think our conclusion was we wouldn't necessarily recommend any changes, obviously unless council directs us otherwise. So the question regarding the cross-reference in terms of looking at, you know, previous sections in terms of prohibited locations, while it's redundant, we're, our recommendation is to retain that there just because it provides all the information for a residential property owner wanting to understand what the regulations are, to retain that there. So we didn't see any harm in keeping that there. Also, the purpose related to that particular regulation is to make sure that if you're placing a for-sale or lease sign in your front yard, you're not blocking the sidewalk, you're not providing any negative visibility, triangle site visibility on your property. So really wanting to reinforce that as you're putting a residential sign on there. And then the other parts were related to making sure that it's clear, so the name of the sign type is a residential for sale for lease to be differentiated from a non-residential. So from our perspective, we felt like that was clear enough and didn't need to provide any changes. And then the last part was related to duration and we really were trying to provide maximum flexibility for residential property owners and not adding a time limit for how long their house can be for sale and a sign can be located in their yard. So we didn't, at the outset, put a time limit on there, but obviously that's for council to determine whether we need to add something, but we didn't feel at this time that was necessary.
But there are limits on the duration for the corporate for-sale for lease signs, correct?
Absolutely, yes, and very strict.
Not on the residential.
Right, we just felt like from an individual property owner trying to sell their property that that would be potentially challenged.
Appreciate that clarity. Council questions, discussion?
Kathy? I had a quick question, just so that I'm sure I understand, Jenny. In your memo, at the end of the second paragraph, it says, "The adherence to the new requirements will be effective when a current temporary sign permit expires." So what is the current time on a temporary commercial permit?
Those are on a yearly basis and I think we provided that maybe at the discussion at the last meeting about that too.
Okay, so if somebody just renewed it, their sign will now stay up for that entire year?
Yes.
Whenever, or if it's due a week from whenever this becomes effective, it comes down then. So it will travel with the current sign. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, this sign regulation was so thoroughly vetted through a couple of different commissions and especially after the conversation with council on the number of signs, the size of sign, the length of time these signs stay up, I honestly do believe this is a very fair regulation for our corporate citizens and also one that will really reduce the clutter, but still allow reasonable and credible advertising of vacancy. So from my part, I think that this has given, been given a lot of thought and I think it's a very good sign package.
Thanks, Jane. Any other comments from council? Hearing none, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 13-21.
Amending various sections of ordinance 15-17 for certain personnel restructuring and adjusting the operating budget accordingly.
Good evening, members of council. Ordinance 1321, amending various sections of ordinance 1517 was originally presented on March 22 of 2021. There have been no changes since the first reading. Subject to any questions council may have, staff recommends approval of this amendment. Thank you.
Great, and thank you. Welcome, Kelly. I think this might be your first presentation here before city council, so.
Yes, that's correct.
Welcome, super glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lindsay, have we received any comments into, through the website?
There are none, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And Jenny, have we received any through the clerk's office?
We have not.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Great, well, thanks, Kelly. You did such a great job on your first run at it. You didn't have a single question, so rattan thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, interjection, first reading public hearing ordinances, ordinance 14-21.
Rezoning two parcels, 5555 and 5565 Perimeter Drive, containing Dublin City Hall from SO Suburban Office and Institutional District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, Kaufman Park totaling approximately 4.44 acres located southwest of the intersection of Perimeter Drive and Emerald Parkway.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Christina. And Nikki Martin will have our staff report. She's already started sharing her screen, so welcome, Nikki.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This evening before you is an ordinance to rezone the Dublin City Hall property at 555 Perimeter Drive and 5556 Perimeter Drive and incorporate it into the Kaufman Park Planned Unit Development District. In detail, you can see the two parcels here located southwest of the intersection of Emerald Parkway and Perimeter Drive. These parcels are proposed to be rezoned from Suburban Office to Planned Unit Development District to complete the Kaufman Park Municipal Campus. This is in line with the future land use recommendations for the area. In rezoning, the Kaufman Park Planned Unit Development District text has been modified to establish subareas. These subareas correlate with rezonings that have taken place over time, with Subarea A originally being conceived in 1994 and added to in 2007. Subarea B, which includes the Dublin Justice Center, was established in 2011 along with the Kaufman Park expansion. And Subarea C would be the Dublin City Hall addition being established in 2021. The uses permitted for Subarea C include municipal and administrative functions as well as parks and open space and any uses that are presently permitted today under Suburban Office. All development standards would be in accordance with the Suburban Office District. Additionally, sign provisions are added to facilitate building identification and engagement given the prominent civic function of Dublin City Hall. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as planning staff are recommending approval of this rezoning at the second reading on April 26. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Nikki. I want to check in. Jenny, have we received any comments through the clerk's office?
We have not.
Thank you. And Lindsay, have we received any via the web?
Nothing on this matter.
Council questions, discussion? We certainly want to hold ourselves to the same standard we hold anyone else to in terms of this, in terms of this rezoning, because this is our new city hall building that's contemplated. Christina, I'm sorry, I may have cut you off. Did you have something to add? I'm having a little lag time in my audio tonight, I think, so apologize if that's the case. Otherwise, we will look forward to second reading public hearing at the April 26 on this ordinance. Okay, ordinance 15-21.
Rezoning two parcels, 6077 and 6101 Avery Road from SO Suburban Office and Institutional District and from NC Neighborhood Commercial District to Washington Township to TF Technology Flex District totaling approximately 1.26 acres located west of Avery Road, south of the intersection with Ireland Place.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Christina. And we'll stick with Nikki for another presentation.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this is a city-sponsored rezoning for two parcels presently owned by the city of Dublin, located on the west side of Avery Road, just south of the intersection with Ireland Place. In total, this is a rezoning of approximately 1.26 acres. This site has two different zoning districts today. One zoning district is a legacy district from Washington Township. The other is Suburban Office. These parcels are proposed to be rezoned Technology Flex District, which is consistent with all of the surrounding zoning districts and facilitates the goals and objectives of the Avery Road Special Area Plan. In review of a rezoning, it's always prudent to refer to the future land use recommendations. This site has two different designations. You will notice that one of the sites is designated for parks and open space in coordination with the Parks and Recreation Department. It has been determined that this site would likely not be used for open space at any point in the future, given surrounding adjacency to larger open spaces, including the Ballantre Community Park. With that, Planning and Zoning Commission as well as planning staff are recommending approval of this ordinance at the second reading on April 26. Be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, I think you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Jenny, have we received any comments through the clerk's office?
We have not.
Thank you. And Lindsay, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll have second reading public hearing on the April 26 for that ordinance. Brings us to ordinance 16-21.
Amendment to zoning code section 153.074 to address the conversion of garages into habitable space.
I'll introduce it.
Christina, and Tammy, there's Tammy. Welcome. You will be our presenter this evening with the staff report.
Thank you so much. I'm not quite as quick as Nikki, so I apologize. So city council has asked, planning to address several code modifications of which we're working diligently with. I have to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as our law director's office, they've been instrumental in us getting to the point where we are comfortable presenting these proposals to city council. The current proposal is dealing with residential properties that choose to convert garage space and deliverable space and any type of requirements the city of Dublin may require of these residents. Again, we're dealing with several code modifications. This particular code modification deals with specifically when residential property owners are converting said space, should we be addressing requirements of the applicants or property owners? This is a directive presented by city council as well as comments from our residential community. It deals with aesthetic considerations when the space is converted, whether property owners still have proper storage for their homes as well as parking spaces for vehicles and their properties. Currently, our residential code does require 2.5 spaces for parking. It does not specify where those parking spaces are required to be, so this code would address simply the loss of space if converted. We chose to identify section 153.074, this is accessory uses and structures. This would apply to all residential zoning districts in the city of Dublin. The current code modification that we're proposing simply states, and I won't read this verbatim, but I'm sure you can see this as stated before you, but it requires if residential structures are to convert attached garages, and I want to highlight attached garages, not detached garages, that they either have existing space within a residential structure or they have accommodations on-site to replace said garage space. So either you have it or you can accommodate it. We did go through a couple durations with Planning and Zoning Commission. They made very minor. We did go through a couple durations with Planning and Zoning Commission, they made very minor recommendations in terms of how this was worded, but essentially this is the original definition. We did present this in two meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. One was an informal request in February and the other was a more formal request of which we gained a recommendation in March. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this code modification to City Council. And we are able to answer any questions that you have. And of course, we're asking respectfully that City Council consider this code modification for approval on second reading in on April twenty-sixth. And again, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Great, thanks Tammy, sure appreciate that. I want to check in with Jenny in the clerk's office, have we received comments regarding this legislation?
We have not.
Thank you, and Lindsay, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Thank you.
Kathy, I think we may have temporary lost Chris.
I think maybe we, here she comes, let's see. Give it a second here. No. No, maybe not, she's got a hotspot, she's probably going to, any questions or comments by council? Then I guess we'll look forward to seeing you back here, Tammy, at our next meeting, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jenny, ordinance seventeen twenty-one.
Amendments to zoning code section one-five-three point zero four four regarding permitted uses in the Technology Flex District related to motor vehicle repair, major.
I'll introduce it.
Great, I am not sure who has our presentation this evening, it looks like Jenny perhaps?
Vice Mayor would be me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Maria, if you could give me sharing rights, that would be great, thank you.
My apologies, I think I lost my internet connectivity for a minute now, I think I'm back, so apologize for that.
Okay, so Tammy is presenting now on the text flex, ordinance seventeen twenty-one.
Okay, shoot, I had a question on sixteen, but you do have a second reading on that on the twenty-sixth, so I will save mine for then, okay. Please go ahead, take it away Tammy, or have you finished your presentation?
Well, I think I'll just talk this through, so Mayor, of course, we would love to answer any questions that you have. So with the Technology Flex District, we are actually proposing to remove a specific permitted use that is currently, of course, included in the text flex district, and that is major auto repair that again is currently permitted. It typically deals with prominent locations amongst major roadways for the City of Dublin and typically does have a storage component that's concerning to the surrounding community. So this particular code modification is requesting to remove major auto repair from the tech flex district. And we would recommend, we would address any comments that you have, but this would be for a second reading in the same meeting, April twenty-sixth.
Great, thank you Tammy. Want to check in with the clerk's office, have we received any comments relative to this legislation?
We have not.
Thank you, and there's Lindsay, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Great, appreciate that. Council questions, discussion?
I just have a quick question, so major vehicle repair, so this is a car repair shop run out of more or less like a warehouse or something like that. Are there any current tenants that are operating this kind of business now? In this district?
Yes, in this district there are, and we did put a provision, and I apologize, that's a very good point. There is a provision that we've included and we call it an existing use provision that allows those operations to not only stay in operations, but to make modifications that they would deem necessary to keep their their locations either well-maintained or properly properly conducive to the neighborhood, so they would be completely legal uses. This would be only pertinent to new uses.
Only new, so if a, let's say a car repair shop changes hands, but they stay in the same location, they're allowed to continue operating?
That's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, hearing none, we will have second hearing, a second reading, public hearing at the April twenty-sixth meeting on that as well, appreciate it Tammy. Okay, ordinance eighteen dash twenty-one.
Amendments to zoning code section one-five-three point zero six six of the City of Dublin's zoning code regarding the Bridge Street development process to add an amended final development plan procedure.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you Christina, and Nikki's back with our staff report, so please, take it away.
Great, good evening Mayor, members of council, I do not have a PowerPoint presentation this evening, as there are no visuals. However, this is a proposed zoning code amendment for the Bridge Street District to modify the review and approval procedures to add an amended final development plan provision. This was an omission when the review and approval procedures were last modified in two thousand and nineteen. This amended final development plan provision is consistent with the planned unit development process, which some council members may be familiar with. Additionally, it provides for a more expeditious review for sites that are already developed today and would benefit from this process. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. The Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of this at your second reading, as is planning staff, thank you.
Great, thanks Nikki. Jenny, have we received any comments via the clerk's office?
We have not.
Thank you, and Lindsay, have we received any via the web?
Nothing from the web.
Thank you, council questions, discussion? Quiet bunch this evening. Okay, very good, well, we will have second reading, public hearing at the April twenty-sixth meeting on this as well. Takes us to ordinance nineteen dash twenty-one.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire the property and easements located at six-three-seven-one Shire Rings Road identified as Franklin County parcel number two-seven-four-zero-zero-zero-one-five-seven-zero-zero from the Board of Education of the Dublin City School District for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway and related infrastructure which shall be open to the public without charge.
I'll introduce it. You're muted, Chris.
Sorry about that, I'm having all kinds of technology problems over here. Our staff report is Megan O'Kelly in this evening, so please take it away Megan.
Good evening, members of council, the city has started construction of University Boulevard Phase Two and Shire Rings Road, Naverie Road intersection improvement project. And the project required the acquisition of property interests from thirteen property owners, including the Board of Education of the Dublin City School District. Staff participated in good faith discussions with Dublin City School District staff for over a year, and the property in question is located at sixty-three seventy-one Shire Rings Road and it's adjacent to our service center. The project requires a utility easement and construction easement as well as a conservation easement, which is needed as part of our environmental permitting process that we've completed. The appraised value of these easements totals ninety-four thousand dollars and we've come to mutually agreeable terms for the acquisition of the property interests from the school district for the appraised value. And as part of the consideration related to the easements, we will also work with the schools to provide an alternate bus access drive for additional access in and out of the board's operation center. And will also grant the board an easement for any portion of that new bus access drive that would cross the city's property as construction of the University Boulevard project did impact their access to that site. The Board of Education approved the easements and the documents on March twenty-second at their meeting, and this ordinance authorizes the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents and acquire the necessary property interests from the board. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-one at the second reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thanks Megan, Jenny, have we received any comments through the clerk's office?
We have not.
Thank you, and Lindsay, have we via the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Yes Jane?
Yeah, Megan, it would be nice at the second reading if you could just kind of show where the new drives would be and where the access through, you know, I know you said that there is a second drive or another way for the buses to leave. It would be nice to be able to see that illustrated, just for the second reading. I do know that when when the University Boulevard design came about, there was some concern and it looks like that you've handled it just beautifully with cooperation with the Board of Education. But just for our ability to visualize, you know, where that access is going to be and where the new drive is going to be, I think would be helpful for the second reading, is that possible?
I would be happy to do that, or I could pull up a graphic now that might
Sure, that's fine if you have it.
Okay. So this graphic shows the school site, the service center for the city is located to the left of the page, you have Shire Rings Road, which becomes University Boulevard at this location. Currently, the schools have this access off of existing Shire Rings Road. And this access will be eliminated because the new University Boulevard, Shire Rings Road pulls away from that site at this location and we have this new access point here, which is in very close proximity to the existing access to the school site. So we will be constructing this new access, you can see the hand there, be a new access that will head to the west and it will join the service center's existing drive. So we will have joint access off of what becomes old Shire Rings Road there. The schools have requested, there's a fence cut and I'll provide a better exhibit for the second reading, but there's a fence back here that surrounds their property and there's a joint service drive between the city's property for the service center over to the Fuel Islands and the Salt Barns. The schools are requesting access through this service center drive. So they would, the buses, you would have some of the buses that would exit out here to this new roundabout and they would like the other half of the buses to be able to exit to the west and share the service center drive, so that's the area that we will likely need to be providing them an easement to cross our property. So it really makes sense for them from a circulation standpoint, you know, they have all those buses coming and going at the same time during the day, so it'll help them distribute that traffic during those times, and really those times don't, won't impact the service center operations because they are at different times during the day. But I can show you a, or provide an updated graphic that illustrates that a little bit better for the second reading.
And it seems as if, and I can't really tell, right now, do they only access to the north to Shire Rings? I mean
Yeah, right now, all their buses actually come out here and use this drive.
Okay, but they all come out just one way, they don't come out Shire Rings, they come out that little Okay, so it sounds as if it actually would open it up to a little bit more of a balanced departure from the lot by going in two different directions, east and west, right?
It will, it provides them a nice opportunity to distribute those buses during those peak times.
Okay, I appreciate that, that's very helpful Megan, thank you very much.
No problem, you're welcome.
Okay, any other comments by council? Okay, hearing none, we will have that second reading on the April twenty-sixth meeting as well. Introduction, public hearing, resolution, resolution twenty dash twenty-one.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the two thousand and twenty pedestrian tunnel maintenance project.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you Christina, and our staff report will be by Paul Berman Smith, there he is, welcome Paul.
Hey, good evening, good evening, members of council. On March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, five bids were received, opened and read for the two thousand and twenty pedestrian tunnel maintenance project. This project is located at the pedestrian tunnel located on Carnoustie Drive, north of Arshire Drive, and the work consists of the removal of the existing stone plaid slopes at each entrance to the existing one hundred and eight inch diameter concrete pipe tunnel. Once the existing stone removal is complete, the tunnel is to be extended and cast-in-place concrete retaining wall with stone veneer facing will be constructed at each tunnel entrance. All work will be located within the existing right-of-way. Carnoustie Drive will remain open to traffic during most of the construction. However, during shoring, drilling operations, concrete placement, and setting of the new concrete pipe end sections, Carnoustie Drive will be closed at the tunnel location and detours posted. These construction activities requiring closure of Carnoustie Drive are anticipated to last three to five consecutive days. The engineer's estimate for this project is four hundred, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. The budgeted funds in the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five CIP for this project are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual pedestrian tunnel maintenance. Complete General Construction Company submitted the lowest and best bid of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents. Construction of the project is to commence in mid-June after the conclusion of the memorial tournament. The completion date is November twentieth of two thousand and twenty-one. The typical communication methods will be used to convey construction information with the residents and motors throughout the duration of this project. Staff will communicate directly with the Muirfield Association prior to any construction activities, so the upcoming work is clearly understood. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the Complete General Construction Company bid. Previous experience with Complete General Construction Company has been favorable on numerous past projects, and staff is competent, they will perform well on this project. Staff recommends council approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-one, accepting as low as best the bid of Complete General Construction Company in the amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Complete General Construction Company for this project. I'll be glad to answer any questions council may have about this resolution.
Great, thanks Paul, Jenny, want to check in with the clerk's office to see if we've received any public comment there?
We have not.
Thank you, and Lindsay, have we via the web?
We have not.
Thank you, council questions, discussion? I just have one Paul, the extension of the tunnel, is that to reduce the grade coming out of the tunnel so that we don't have such a slope?
That is correct. Yeah, we'll, yeah, a little more gradual grade, deal with the slopes coming down off the roadway, similar to what we did on Muirfield Drive tunnels several years ago, the parallel tunnels.
Should help with the washout, so.
Yes, absolutely, you're welcome.
Okay, anything else from council on that? Hearing none, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes. Okay, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-one, thanks Paul.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the signalized intersection upgrade phase three project.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, oh, we're going to stay right there with Paul, no wonder he didn't go away.
He's Abu all over again.
Floor is yours, sir.
All right, members of council, on March twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-one, five bids were received, opened and read for the Dublin Signalized Intersection Upgrades Phase Three Project. Work concluded in this project consists of the addition of radar-based vehicle detection on Riverside Drive at the Summit View intersection, the placement and relocation of the traffic signal controller cabinet, and a replacement of wiring at this intersection. All work is located within the existing right-of-way. Riverside Drive and Summit View Road will remain open to traffic for the duration of the of the construction. During the construction phases, lanes may be closed, but traffic will be maintained. The engineer's estimate for this project is $161,500. The budgeted funds in the CIP for Dublin Signalized Intersection Upgrades Phase Three project are $165,000. Complete General Construction Company submitted the lowest and best bid of $998,285.75. The completion date for the project is November 19, 2021. Once again, the typical communication methods will be used to convey information to the motors and public throughout the project, and staff has thoroughly reviewed Complete General Construction Company's bid. As I stated previously on the former project, previous experience with Complete General has been very good on several past projects, and we expect they will perform well on this project. Staff recommends council approval of resolution 2021, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Complete General Construction Company in the amount of $98,285.75 and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Complete General Construction Company for this project. I will be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding this resolution.
Great, thanks, Paul. Jenny, have we received any comments on this legislation through the clerk's office?
We have not.
Thank you. And Lindsay, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Sorry, had an issue there with my spacebar, yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, this brings us to the other portion of our agenda and our 2021 outdoor pools operating plans and costs. And I believe that Matt Ehrman and Matt Stifler will be tag teaming to deliver this message. I see Matt.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, good evening, members of council. Staff has three operating models to present to you this evening for your consideration as we continue to move into the spring and summer seasons. You'll recall last year, many restrictions and changes to plans were made to provide the safest and best services in light of the pandemic. These restrictions and changes continue to evolve, and staff has prepared an overview of updated plans for this year, as well as the estimated budgetary implications that result. Overall and collectively, the budget impact is generally neutral. So for the sake of brevity, I'll keep the introductions of each model at a high level, and we have our staff's subject matter experts on hand to accommodate any detailed questions you may have. With that, starting with the outdoor pool operations for the 21 season, or 2021 season, in your packet is a summary for the operating plans. The staff report also includes a summary and recap of what we experienced and learned in 2020, based on what we did learn. We, we feel we have a great opportunity to adjust operational changes that will enhance the 2021 season. The good news is season passes are a viable option for 2021. Staff has explored three models to determine the appropriate number of passes to sell, to balance the anticipated attendance at both the north and the south pool. And there may be an option to increase the number of season passes depending on how the season progresses. Last season, we had an elevated age restriction for unsupervised children that will be rescinded this year, and we will revert back to the original rule of 10 years of age and over being allowed entry without adult supervision. Outdoor swim team operation will be restarted this season. This will follow protocol consistent with the Dublin Recreation Center operations, which were approved by Franklin County Public Health. We're planning on opening the body slides and diving boards at each facility, however, these will, depending the approval of Franklin County Public Health. And the diving boards will only be open during limited times due to the landing zone requirements and pool closure subject to that, when we are trying to accommodate larger crowd sizes. Lap swimming will also be available at both pools at dedicated time periods. You'll recall the north pool design also features an additional lap swimming lane grouping in the leisure pool that will be made available to season pass holders prior to the pool opening in the mornings. This will not conflict with swim team practices being in a separate pool. Ball and trace spray park, unfortunately, due to the high volumes of people congregating in one place and the inability to provide contact tracing, the spray park will remain closed for the 2021 season due to the nature of that operation. Staff will continue to monitor state and county guidelines and will make adjustments as needed. With the anticipated changes as noted, there is an effect on 2021 financial estimates. Under normal pool operation revenue, pre-pandemic, we have a history of being approximately $500,000 per year. Put that into perspective, the 2020 actual revenues last year during the pandemic were just over $61,000. Conservatively, with the changes noted and the uncertainty of revenues this year, staff is using the low revenue estimate for 2021, which is expected to be approximately $245,000. As a result, an additional transfer of $200,000 may be needed for the 2021 operation. If needed, this transfer would be included in the second quarter supplemental appropriations in June. In order to allow staff to continue to prepare the execution of the operating model before this evening, staff is recommending approval to move forward with the model and to approve the additional $200,000 transfer from the general fund to the pool fund, which will be included in the second quarter supplemental if it is needed. Again, staff is on hand this evening, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Matt. Questions, comments from council? Kathy?
First of all, Matt, on, on this and the other presentations you're going to give tonight, I so appreciate the data. I, I think, I know it was a lot of work to collect the data and manage it, but it, it's incredibly helpful, and I wanted to congratulate and thank staff for their work on that. Sort of two questions, I'm, I'm assuming there may be some interest and maybe uneven demand for this new north pool when it opens? In terms of usage and size, do the models incorporate that in the planning? I'm sure they do, I guess the question is, how do they incorporate that in the planning? And then my second question is, Hav, are you guys going to do any types of surveys on usage for the pool with the community? Thanks.
To answer your first question about the size of the pool, it is everything about the size of the pool and the surface area the pools have to offer in order for us to maintain that six-foot distancing. So the formulas we are basing on, basing all of our capacities on, is that square footage of swimmable area. And we will continue to monitor that and make sure that we're reading those guidelines as we progress through the season. As for the popularity of the north pool, yes, it will be very popular, and we will survey both facilities this year to get satisfaction results and usage trends to see where we are from a balance of each facility. You'll recall back, and maybe you will, maybe you won't, but in 2004, when we opened up the south pool, the anticipation was everybody would congregate and flock to the south pool, when in reality, the north pool remained the primary destination pool for the community, mainly because it was embedded right in the heart of the neighborhoods. So there are a lot of factors involved, just, you know, a, a new facility, there might be a, an initial influx of people just because of the newness of the facility, but we will continue to evaluate all of the criteria and come up with a great balance, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, Matt, well, first and foremost, I think it's great that you are able to show the community, you know, why you're making the moves that you're making and that you're opening it up more, and I think that's going to be really well received. As the governor brings out more, hopefully more flexible plans, is your intention to be flexible in real time with what the governor says? Or will you be, how will you make your decisions to open up the pool more and more, you think?
Well, it's exactly the guidelines that are set by either the governor or health department officials, and, you know, we will continue to monitor those, and we've already got contingency plans in place. What, what you're, what you're looking at this evening are, under current conditions, they are changing in real time, and our staff has done an amazing job, put not just these plans together, but multiple scenarios of what could happen and how we might be able to accommodate. So let's hope we continue to go in the right direction here and serve as many as we can.
So I appreciate that. I know that, the reason I ask that question is because I know people are listening, they're looking to see how we're going to do it, and if they hear that, that we have the ability and the capabilities to move quickly, to open up if we can, I think that gives people a lot of encouragement. And if we can't, they have to understand why, and I think you've laid out some great data, and you've surveyed, and they understand we're just not doing this objectively, we're doing it with a lot of thought and a lot of preparation. So I think I, I really congratulate, and I appreciate the staff's work on that, your work on that, and I think it helps the city understand why we do what we do. So thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Other questions? Matt, sure do appreciate that, and I know the community, like Jane said, will be very appreciative that we continue to evolve and change with the changing guidance. I think it's going to be important that we keep up with the most current guidance and, you know, do all that we can to meet the needs of the residents. The next item on our agenda is the 2021 events Irish Festival operating plans and associated costs, and I think Matt Ehrman and, oh, there's Allison as well. So we have, we have an all-star cast here for, for this next one.
And I will take another attempt to give you an overview, and Allison can chime in at the end and answer some questions for you. But in your packet is another summary of proposed operating plans for the community events for 2021. And just like all of our other operation, guidelines are ever-changing, and the control of the plans of what we can and cannot do are dependent on those restrictions. Planning for the larger events requires a substantial upfront commitment for city dollars and other resources. So in order for the team to be successful planning for each event, now is a necessary time to minimize the risk of cancellations and lost revenue and unnecessary expenditures by getting this quick start. So let me start off with just Memorial Day. Staff has been working with the Wesley G. Davids American Legion Post 800 to formulate plans. At the March meeting, Veterans Advisory Commission Committee endorsed the virtual approach to commemorate the day again this year, given the current restrictions and guidelines. Similar to last year, staff will assist in the development of a special video and will promote ideas for residents to commemorate the day at home. Unfortunately, the annual picnic will not be held again this year as well. As for Independence Day, a variety of activities are planned for Saturday, July 3. Most likely, the parade will not be able to be our traditional parade due to the typical numbers of people who attend and social distancing being nearly impossible. Staff is considering either another reverse parade, similar to the one held at St. Patrick's Day at Dari Fields, or another small neighborhoods parade to cruise the city streets as last year to expand the social distancing along a much longer route. As for holding concerts, booking a national touring act just isn't possible this year, and accommodations inside Kaufman High School Stadium are not sufficient to accommodate the typically large crowd. Staff is exploring the possibilities of hosting smaller concerts with local bands in more than one location near Kaufman High School and Kaufman Park in order to accommodate the large numbers. The good news is, staff is currently planning to have fireworks for the show this year. The challenge of this is some of the areas where residents typically gather may be limited, so staff will work with community and public information team to encourage residents to watch the fireworks from various areas around the site, from their homes and their cars and designated parking lots nearby. Other activities scheduled for the celebration include bike brigades, fishing gerbys, block parties, and virtual activities. Now on to the big event of the Dublin Irish Festival. Rather than one large gathering in Kaufman Park, staff is planning a citywide Irish celebration throughout the first week in August, or weekend in August, I should say. There are basically two main focus areas that we'll be working with this year. The first focus will be on performances from local Irish bands in the South Field of Kaufman Park and a performing arts play in Kaufman Park Outdoor Amphitheater. The second focus will be in downtown Dublin in conjunction with Visit Dublin and Downtown Alliance to bring live Irish music, crafts, and activities throughout the area. And as tradition has it, the weekend will be kicked off by the annual 5K race and dub crawl. So collectively, the financial implications as a result of each of these plans results in an actual reduction of expenditures, more so than the reduction in revenues. So accounting for an actual increase in the ending balance of the hotel motel fund by approximately $135,000. This sets us up for a more comfortable 2022 planning, event planning. More details of each event will be provided closer to the respective dates of, as health orders may change prior to the events. To ensure adequate time is available for planning efforts, staff is recommending approval of these plans as presented, with the discretion to alter such plans subject to any changes of the current guidelines. With that, staff and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, Christina?
Matt, can you describe what you mean by pods?
Yes, I will let Allison describe that, because I had to ask her that same question. Straight away, Allison.
And, and this is actually changing, when we originally wrote this memo, it was before the governor's orders last week when he changed the groupings, but we're calling the pods the, so when we wrote it, it was four people in a section that had to be separated six foot from another group of people. So our pod now can be up to 10 people. So we're kind of looking at how we're going to do that, whether we're going to make all pods 10 people, or some pods might be smaller, especially we're thinking for Irish Festival, how many people come out all 10 together. So we're kind of trying to gauge what those pod sizes are going to be, but it's basically going to be the area where your group's allowed to be, and it will be six foot away from the other area.
Because in my mind, it was very different. I had a picture of this, like, physical pod. So just so you know, thank you, that was very helpful.
Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, you know, I would really love to see us have the Fourth of July parade, mainly because the reverse parade was so successful that it created so much traffic angst and people waiting in line for two and three hours to go through it, that now that we have the allowance for pods of 10 people, it seems to me that we could easily have 10 people six foot apart along a parade route and really get the citizens back into some normalcy. Is that possible? What do you think?
It's, one of the things, we know that we don't have to make that decision until a little bit later, because when we start taking applications in May is when we really need to know, so we have a few more weeks to make that final decision. And we're really just kind of want to watch how these health orders go, if they change one way or another, so we don't want to overpromise and then have to pull it back.
Right, you know, I, I.
Allison, could we?
Go ahead, Chrissy.
I was just saying, is it possible to not make that decision before we open the application window and allow people to go ahead and apply? And, you know, maybe we don't make the decision till June 15, or, or whatever that drop dead is, date is to be able to staff the event? I, I don't know that the application date is necessarily the best one for us to pick to, you know, to orbit around.
We could push it back probably a little bit later, I wouldn't want to go to the 15th, because there were some professional things that we could use. For example, if you remember the guys who were on the zip line dressed as leprechauns, like, so there's something like, like that would only work for the reverse parade, and then there are some things that we have in the regular parade that we couldn't have in the reverse parade. So we could probably push that date back. I'll go back and kind of check with some of our people that we do hire to see when their kind of drop dead date is, to see how far we can really push it.
Or even if we had to pay a small fee, you know, if, if they were not able, you know, we could keep them on hold, and they've got to understand the predicament that we're in, and I'm assuming they don't have another gig on the line. You know, I, I just don't want us to, to make the decision too early and regret it, but I, I'm, I'm very cognizant that we need to make a decision, and I appreciate the difficulty that that puts on you and, and all of the event staff, so.
You know, Chris, I, I like the idea that, of what you're saying, and I also think, Allison, some of these people that are stationary, even if we take them, we can utilize them on the, on, on our celebration day in the historic district or in Bridge Park. We can find a place that they can create some energy, even if it wouldn't be at the parade possibly, you know, it could be at another location and give. You know, it could be at another location and give us just as much excitement and fun and use like utilize them somewhere else.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah.
Right, like even if we have the zip line guys, but we end up doing an actual parade, we could still have the zip line guys, just that you put them someplace else. Or you have them like right at the beginning of the parade or you throw them in the Derby lot. I don't know. I just think there's other things we could do with them. I don't mean throw them, you know what I mean?
You're right.
In my head, like saying leprechauns.
It's all about fun, one way or the other.
Allison, Matt, the, it's just incredible how creative you guys are, nimble, willing to put forth so much effort only to know that maybe some of that effort is going to be in vain. It's truly inspirational and we appreciate what you're doing, you, both of you and staff as a whole. What you pulled off in the reverse parade, clearly very popular. I'm hoping we can pull off a real parade, but I'm confident that no matter what the governor or the coronavirus throws our direction, you guys are going to figure out something that's going to wow our residents. So thank you.
I really appreciate it, Andy. And I can't say enough how much effort our staff does put into this. And you know, they take a lot of pride in making sure that it's successful and most importantly, a safe environment. So you know, their, their hard work and dedication to that is very much appreciated and I appreciate those comments.
Yeah, and I too, I too hope that we can do a more traditional parade. And if, even if that means extending the length of it so we get a little more space for people, right? Add another half a mile or whatever it is on there to do that. And I also appreciate that in the tickets and approach that Dublin residents are given an opportunity to be first in line because I know that's, these are going to be quite popular. And I think that's, that's very important and I appreciate your, the staff's work on that as well. So it's going to be fun.
Well, we will certainly take all of these points of good ideas into consideration and we'll keep the brainstorm moving. So thank you.
Great. Thanks, Matt. We'll move on to the summer camp operating plans and associated costs.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mayor. And similar to the city's other operation plans, summer camps are in the same boat. They were very limited in 2020 due to ratio requirements, as you recall. And given the lower ratio of requirements and other operational requirements, enrollments for camps last year were still only about at 60% of the capacity that we did offer. Variety of those reasons might be just general hesitancy to the, you know, to engage in communal activities. More people are working remotely and those kinds of things. So we also had a flexible refund policy as the pandemic evolved and people backed out of, of, you know, sending their child to camp. So this year, staff has reached out to residents to gauge their interest so that we can make sure that we can respond with a much more positive outcome than last year. And to accommodate more campers, staff has made multiple restructuring plans to provide the best opportunities for various age groups based on those trends. This year, an additional three hours of care of those in need of more than an eight-hour day. We developed a collaboration with Dublin Latchkey, which will now fulfill those in need of the extra time. While field trips do not remain an option for 2021, swimming at the outdoor pool at the North Pool will resume on a limited basis for Wyandotte Camp and Wyandotte Next Camps. Just last week, in fact, the staff had plans to initiate an eight-person or eight campers per room ratio, as per the guidelines from Franklin County Public Health. Fortunately, last week, we, we were approved to accommodate 16 campers per room, which substantially increases our cost recovery model from 93% to over 175%. That is an estimated net revenue of just over $203,000 to support the program. If by chance the restrictions are reversed back to the ratios, that would result in a 93% cost recovery. Therefore, staff is before you this evening recommending approval of the associated subsidization if it were to be necessary. So with that, staff is here for any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Council's questions? Okay, I don't see or hear any, so we will. You know, I'm going to take just a minute on all three, on our, the other portion of our agenda. Jenny, have we received any comments from the clerk's office on the other portion of our agenda?
We have not.
Thank you. And Lindsay, have we received any through the web?
We have not.
Great, great, great. Oh, brings us to staff comments and General McDaniel was there.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I, if you don't mind calling for a motion to approve these so that we can move forward with the subsidization levels that we are proposing, that would be appreciated.
Oh, certainly can. I will make a motion to approve the subsidization levels as presented this evening relative to the upcoming plans.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jenny, would you please call?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Matt. Staff comments. Dana.
Good evening, members of council. Just wanted to lift up a couple of items that were in your packet but not on the agenda formally tonight. The first one was a memo and I want to thank Matt Stifler for helping me to get this together. It's about the American Rescue Plan funding. The latest COVID-related federal responsibility, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, as you know, was enacted on March 11th, 2021. This is the sixth federal bill appropriating funds to respond to and recover from the pandemic. We're still waiting detailed guidance from U.S. Treasury regarding allowable uses for the new state and local fiscal recovery funds. The City of Dublin is estimated to receive a total of $9.6 million. The payments to local governments will be split in two, 50% within 60 days of the enactment of the law and the remaining 50% not earlier than 12 months after the first payment. In the memo that was in your packet, we pointed out certain economic uncertainties. Staff recommends deferring any decisions regarding how to allocate or spend this funding until later in 2021. This funding will be deposited in the Coronavirus Relief Fund you established previously and will require council action to appropriate when a decision is made regarding the utilization of this funding. The city has significant time to study and address the short and long-term impact of the economic situation, the actions at the State House that, you know, we are all monitoring closely, and the expenditures of those funds. So I'm not asking for any action tonight, but just suggest that at some point there should probably be a discussion relative to the use of these funds. And that's really just all I wanted to lift up on that item tonight, unless you had any questions or comments that you, that you wanted to bring up about that.
Yeah, Jane.
I do, Dana. The, the other care dollars that we received, are they all allocated? I know you had to allocate them up to a certain date, but are there, are all of them allocated at this point?
I'll ask Matt to jump in if I'm wrong, but I think the answer to that is yes. And that had to be done in accordance with the law by the end of last year. So we, we were able to get that money expended and, you know, some of that was allocated to some other agencies as well.
Okay.
It's not have quite the same kind of deadlines on it that we know of. But again, we're still waiting on some of the, you know, once it comes down out of the federal government, there's a lot of, it trickles through U.S. Treasury and then there could be other rule sets and timelines attached to it. So we're waiting for that, see what happens.
Okay. The reason I ask that, and I agree with putting the money in escrow until we understand what that 20-day rule is. But because, you know, in general, the law allows for funds to be used to respond to public health emergencies, including assistance to households, nonprofits, that sort of thing. The reason I ask that is because, and I'll report on this, the money that we gave 60,000 out of the cares money to the Dublin Pantry, the Bridges and the Welcome Warehouse has been utilized exactly for how that law intends it to be. And especially since it's 6.9 million or 9.6 million. I would really like to see another portion of money be allocated. They have spent that money. I know Dublin Bridges spent almost all of their money for exactly that purpose, for homelessness, for shelter, for rent, for utility payments. And to hold it till the end of 2021 without any more money being allocated to some of these really needy folks in our community, you know, I would like to see us talk about that. Not decided tonight, but at least have some consideration for being able to utilize maybe some of that funding. Or I don't find other.
Our suggestion certainly isn't around waiting till the end of the year. It's just a little bit, I think if anything, we give it, you know, a couple more months. But if there's, you know, obviously if there's significant need to those agencies, if they make us, you know, make you aware of that, you want to have that conversation, certainly it's what you should be doing. So if you have some awareness of that, so.
I think it's important too that we understand that the guidance on these dollars is significantly different than the guidance on the cares dollars in terms of revenue replacement and economic development. And the, you know, it's a much broader brush that we have to paint this with than we had previously. And I had asked Dana to bring this forward. One of the reasons is to understand, you know, Columbus is getting hundreds of millions of dollars. And so the way that they distribute those dollars will be significantly different than, you know, their, their revenue per resident is in excess of 10 times per revenue per resident that, that we are receiving. So I, I just think that it's something we all need to start thinking about because we're going to hear what other communities are doing. But we need to understand at the same time that not everyone's allocation was equal.
Right, Chris. And I also think that, you know, if there's a way for us to help our nonprofits who are helping our residents as well as residents in our Dublin School District that are outside our corporate limitations, we might find some additional help through the county and also through Columbus for residents that we are actively helping today. And that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for avenues of funding to help us help our residents and our Dublin student residents too, so.
Yeah, the other thing I would add to this, you know, just, if I may, is that remember too, this was a much larger bill than what had been passed previously. So there's a lot of funding coming down a lot of different directions and aimed in a lot of different ways. So while we often talk about what local governments got allocated to them, there are other dollars coming through for business, coming through for a school system, coming through for, I believe, through other ways. So we're trying to kind of get our arms around that as well. Some of that's pretty explicit in the bill, if you look at some of the summaries of that and so forth. But, but actually, you know, some of that's in the intricacies of it, which may not be quite so obvious. So we're trying to dig through some of that as well to make sure we understand what others are getting that they could have access to in addition to or other than from the city as well. So it's still a little bit of fog, fogginess out there on it, which there always is, especially on a bill this size and this much. So, so yeah, I hear you loud and clear on that.
Great. And I think you have an award to announce to us?
Yeah, thank you. The, the only other item was I wanted to congratulate our finance team, Matt Stifler in the group, and as well as city council and all city staff who contribute to the fiscal health and accountability for the city because we all kind of have, we all have a significant role in that. The Government Finance Officer Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Dublin for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended December 31st of 2019. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. So I just want to extend our congratulations to the team. And I, I know that they work really hard to put that Comprehensive Annual Financial Report together. It's quite the document and it's very, much tells the story in a very accountable and transparent way. So thanks to the team for that and be happy to answer any other questions you might have of me this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any questions from council?
Nope, just a big hearty congratulations to Matt and his team. That's a very big deal to do. So well done.
Thanks, Matt. Congratulations. Okay, that will bring us to council committee reports. We'll start with planning and zoning, Jane.
Let's see. Basically, planning and zoning, well, this coming Thursday, we will be looking at the G4 block in Bridge Park. But planning and zoning, spent some time last week doing some goal setting for the coming year. And I'll just give you a quick highlight on what some of the commission members were looking forward to doing. They needed, they wanted to do some discussion on sustainability initiatives, architectural evaluation and review, housing density and residential policy. They want a micro view of trends in housing, which I did, we did talk about the fact that we're doing a current Dublin housing study. They'd like to know what our regional partners are doing and how we can react and understand the surrounding areas. They would like staff to present some compelling neighborhoods that are answering the needs for housing today throughout the country and possibly bringing in a speaker. Placemaking was an area that they're interested in because we talk about it all the time. And what are planning projects, updating them on current planning projects and future ones. And the, they are going to begin to get a monthly update on, as we do in council, on, on what's going on in the, in, with different departments and how, how councils' actions, our council actions that we put out, that Jenny puts out after each meeting, those will go forward to the planning and commissioning all of our commission members to get a little bit of an understanding of what's going on in the city. So there is quite a bit of interest on at least the planning and zoning board and I know on our other boards to stay updated on current activities of the city and what council is doing.
Great. Is that it, Jane? Thanks so much. Admin committee, Kathy?
Yes, thank you very much. I have a committee report and then a couple other follow-on items if I could. The admin committee met last Tuesday, April the 6th. We had two topics on our agenda, a Dublin 2035 Visiting Workshop and a diversity, equity, and inclusion update from staff. I won't spend time on the 2035 visiting, visiting exercise where all the different committees are working on that and we'll come back to council in June to bring that back together for a discussion. I'll share a little bit on our second topic, and that is staff provided an update on the city's DEI activities. Homer Rogers provided a historical perspective of the city's procedures and policies that have been adopted and it acted since 1989. It was very informative and that's, it is quite an extensive list. That is out in BoardPAC, so I would encourage council members if they want to, to go out and take a look at, at that action. We also received a brief update on council's 2020 resolutions that directed the formation of the Community Task Force, the Chief's Advisory Council, and the establishment of the LGBTQ+ liaison offices in the, offices to the city manager and to the police department. I'm pleased to say that all the groups have been actively meeting and working and we're going to expect to have an update at city council on the Community Task Force over the coming months. We also received an update on the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equity Index. As you recall, Dublin is one of, just a handful of the non-large cities in the state of Ohio that are tracked. Dublin continues to make progress on several areas in this index and we reviewed some specific areas of action and other potential areas moving forward. Then finally, we received an update on several of the DEI training programs and sessions that the city have initiated with the city staff over 21, 20 and 21. As you will recall, in addition to a complete review of the city's policies and practices, city leadership has also been hard at work to bring DEI training and learning sessions, whether that's in person or e-learning modules to the staff. They have been working with local experts, including Stephen Francis, who has been very helpful in creating assessment and training workshops really tailored to the needs of city staff. One of the action items that we explored at the conclusion of the Administrative Committee was to inquire to see if it would be possible to, for staff to explore the development of a tailored DEI training that could be effective for city council members as well as our boards and commissions. So based on your thoughts and feedback this evening, um, the Administrative Committee would be pleased to follow up. If there's interest to look at a design cost and administration of, uh, a very tailored streamlined DEA training module for council and boards and commissions. And we could bring that back to this group, um, if you would like. So I will conclude there and ask Christina and Jane if there's anything else to add to that report and get your thoughts on the training.
I think you covered it pretty well, Kathy.
I would say so.
Great. Does it make sense then to continue to follow up and bring back some specific, um, DEI training activities to council? Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about, um, balancing, um, you know, the the desire to have some training and, and stuff with also being very respectful of boarding commission time because they already dedicate a lot of time to us. And I, I know they are so willing to dedicate that time. Because we talked about doing some, um, slightly pared back in-person training from what the in-person training that Homer was talking about. You know, cutting out some of the videos, those kinds of things so that we could try to keep it maybe around an hour. Um, I definitely think that's worthwhile to do. And I, I would encourage the balance of council to support that. Um, I think it'd be super helpful for our boards and commissions to be able to do that and, and hopefully not, um, you know, big massive time commitment either.
I, I think that's a great idea. I would, I'd encourage that.
I like the idea that it, that we discussed how it would be targeted for our boards and commissions and not a broad diversity training, because I think they, they deal with the public in a manner differently than maybe staff does or the, the council does because they see applicants. And I think that's a, a very important, um, opportunity for them to learn how to interact with the public, um, with diversity training that is targeted for them.
Great. So with that, um, the committee will, will, um, work with staff and bring back some specifics on what that would look like and how we would administer that with council and boards and commissions. So then I had two other quick items if I could please. Um, one is a reminder that we will have interviews for openings on ARB this Wednesday afternoon at 4:00 PM. And information regarding that is in Board Pack. And then finally, as an administrative item, um, I wanted to bring forth, uh, one other item for consideration this evening. And that is during our, you know, economic, economic development discussions and strategic planning and our boards and commission discussions, council has continued to stress the importance of creating venues for council members to meet with and learn from the Dublin business leaders. Um, and to that end, um, council has been exploring ideas for establishing a mechanism for ongoing engagement and dialogue with our, um, very important business community. And we've asked city staff to help us in that. The first step, of course, in that process is to be sure that we have collective, um, I guess, group clarity on what goals we're trying to accomplish with that. Um, and to that end, um, an email was sent to council with some thoughts on background on what goals of putting together that, um, group could look like. Four goals were suggested for consideration and I thought maybe we'd spend a few minutes this evening on that. See if we could get clarity and then talk about how to move that, um, item forward. The four suggested goals for consideration would be an advisory group that would grow council's understanding of the dynamics that are shaping Dublin's businesses today and into the future. Also to create a venue for open dialogue and exchange with Dublin's business leaders and city council. Explore ideas with Dublin's business leaders to ensure Dublin remains the best place in the Midwest to work, live, innovate and grow a business and to further council's understanding of the perspectives and needs of the city's largest employers. So with that, I will pause to get thoughts and comments on that and we can talk about moving forward.
Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, you know, I know that one of the things that we talked about, and of course, all corporate CEOs or whoever is on this opportunity to network with these, uh, corporate leaders is that they want to know what we are asking of them. What is the objective of getting together? And in sitting down and looking at, um, those, um, goals that Kathy had sent out and asked us to think about, um, I just want to throw out my thoughts and throw them in the pool. One, I think, uh, we should tell them that one of the objectives is to build a stronger relationship between the Dublin City Council members, our economic development staff and our major corporate citizens. I think, one, relationships lead to ideas and creativity. And I think, one, the objective is just to build a strong relationship among these particular people. Also, to gain a perspective and input on the corporate challenges that they face that we would like to hear what those issues and challenges are. To be able to discuss suggestions and action plans that a city might be able to incorporate to benefit our corporate community. And, and thirdly, um, not only the input on their challenges, but on what would be their suggestions and their input, their perspectives on recruiting corporate citizens to the city. What are the human resources needs that they face? What are the physical constraints or the physical design of a a, a corporation might need, uh, that a city might be able to look at in planning? And, uh, and, and what are the marketing issues that they deal with or that they consider as they either come into the city or expand within the city? Those are just a few of the things. Um, obviously leveraging the network opportunities are important. But I think there's a lot of, of mining of their expertise that I am sure that Colleen and our economic development staff already understand and realize, but be able to talk about it around a table with a small group of people and city council members, I think, would, would give us some foundational insight as we, as we build policy, we look at, um, some of the issues that we're dealing with, whether that's workforce, housing, uh, incentives, that sort of thing. So those are just a few, Kathy. I hope that helps.
Thank you. So I, I think Jane, those are some, you know, I think great goals to, to work towards. My concern that I have with this is I don't know that, that CEOs want to hang out with us. I mean, we've had this conversation, right? How, how can we do this in a way that they're actually benefiting from talking with us? And I feel like trying to put people on an additional committee is probably not one of them. I, I think we also have the chamber. I'd really like to have this conversation in partnership with the chamber because they do so much with our corporate, um, partners and, 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 and with all these folks out there. I just don't want to redo or I'd rather have this being augmenting experience so that it augments things that, that are already being worked on versus like yet another thing that we're asking them to do. Because, you know, we, we have the things that we would want to see from them, but I, I'm not sure that, 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 you know, a CEO of, you know, uh, a larger company is going to want to, like, come to a networking thing with us. I, I just don't know that that's going to happen. And, but I do think that there are ways that we can engage with them, either through a small group or through one-on-one or what have you, to start to get to some of the things that you're talking about, Jane, um, maybe in partnership with the, with the chamber. Because our chamber, they, they have all those contacts and they have these relationships with these CEOs and stuff. I mean, they're a phenomenal group that has a lot of information. I mean, workforce planning is something that I think is critical to any business. So understanding what that is, is helpful. But then what do we do about that to help them? So, um, you know, I, I think there's got to be more give and take. Like, yeah, here's what we're looking for from you, but what do you need from us? That's the harder piece to get to is to, is to have that conversation. So just, I don't want to create another committee for the sake of having another committee that doesn't necessarily feel like quite the right move. What I'd really love to do is I'd love to invite the chamber in to a council work session or some sort of format like that for us to talk this through with them, because frankly, they are the experts on this kind of interaction. And I'd really like to hear from them what they're already collecting, what do they already know? How can we leverage their relationships? You know, to help us with some of these questions that we have. So that's, that's my two cents.
Good points, and we don't want to leave out our own economic development staff too. I, I don't think
Sorry, I didn't intend to, like, they have to be
Yeah, right. I know you didn't. And, and I don't know that we need, uh, an advisory board. It's the same people all the time. I think what we're, what I know that we've been asking for is developing relationships among councils so that we're familiar with the people that live, that work in our communities and that we build the relationship. So it's a start. You're right. I think there's many ways to approach this.
I sort of see this maybe from a slightly different angle. You know, the chamber's been around for, I don't even know how long, been very successful for all of that time. It seems to me, and I, and I think, I could be wrong, and I don't want to speak for all you guys, but it seems to me that we, it, it came from these, the, the interviews of the boards and commission people who came in. And one particular gentleman that came in that I think surprised all of us that this guy even lived here in Dublin and he was willing to volunteer and he was willing to give us information and share with us so that we had a better idea of what the business community was thinking. The chamber's been here, our economic development people have been here. I mean, there's a reason why Dublin is, is as successful as it is. For me, it was, the idea would be to tap a different vein. You know, so that, and I don't know, i- if you go to 10 CEOs around Dublin and you say, would you serve on our business advisory committee? I think they probably pass because it sounds time-consuming, it sounds sort of philosophical and government-esque and this is just going to be a time sponge and it's, I don't know what I'm going to get out of this. I was, it, for me, I think there is an opportunity for us to drill into a different vein, which is maybe not creating a board for them to serve on for some period of time, but a, 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 some kind of a mechanism for the conversation to happen. Because let's face it, uh, we have a fantastic staff, but there, there are seven elected officials in this community and they're on this call. And there are a tremendous number of extremely successful CEOs, business people that are brighter and smarter on so many issues than any of us are, but the policies and the laws that we pass and the, the programs we, we implement and the economic incentive package is not, it affects those people. And so it seemed to me that there would be an opportunity for this group to tap into that group. And, and I think you have to be very careful about not casting that too wide, not making it sound like something that's already been done. Sound like something that, you know, we've done this before, we're just going to try to do it a different way. I think it's kind of a different, unique thing. And I don't know exactly how, I, I rightly respect Kathy, your effort to try to get it into, um, a box. I mean, that's what has to happen for progress to be made. It just seems to me that there are people in this community that we, the seven people who pass policy, would benefit from hearing from them. I don't think we can contact them and say, you know, Ronald Reagan said the scariest words in the English language, I'm, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. We're not here to help them. We are here to try to learn what they need so they can help us be better at our job. I think it's also important, you know, it's, we talk about the tip of the spear and how important the tax bases and all that. The biggest employers, I think, are critically important, but I would tend to venture a guess that maybe collectively, the small businesses maybe employ even more people than the biggest employers do. So I think we should maybe try to include some more of the, you know, the great guys of the world who maybe doesn't employ, you know, hundreds and hundreds of employees, but he certainly has a very important perspective to share on how we impact businesses bottom line, because that is the, that's the train that's pulling this economy or our business community. And I think if we can tap into a relationship with them where we ask them, what is it you guys think about when you consider what we're doing? And in an opportunity for them to do the talking and us to do the listening, I think there's a unique place to find where that guy that we interviewed that impressed all of us terrifically and we're kind of scratching our head thinking, how in the world did we not know how to tap into this before this guy came and volunteered to interview? And he's a perfect example of what it is we need to know is here and how we do it. And I think it's also important. And, and, you know, I, we've talked about this before, that sometimes you want the people, you want to have a conversation with the people that don't necessarily volunteer to have it. And so I think we need to build a network. And I hate using like words that seem very overused and whatever, but, um, we need to find out sort of inventory, who it is that's living here in our community. Because I think there's an opportunity, uh, to talk to some of these people, not, not only the, the people that, you know, that, that the guy that we interviewed doesn't happen to work in Dublin, I don't believe. He lives in Dublin, but he works at OSU. And so I think we need to try to inventory who it is that's here that will be important for us to sit down and listen to and then create a forum in which it would not be completely, um, something that just sounds like a waste of time to them. Because it's important for the seven of us to have relationships with those people, not just the, the, the structure of business. So we get to know them. That's sort of what I think would be a, a really wise thing to try to tap into.
So, uh, you guys, uh, can perhaps drive mechanically how what Greg just said actually happens. I think a committee, I'll use the Dublin Friendship, um, Association as an example. You've got two council members that sit on that and a bunch of other folks from the community. I don't know that legally, we can get seven council members together with a CEO of any size business. So to me, logistically, the way it happens is Colleen and the rest of the economic development folks and the chamber, they know who these people are. And they're having conversations with those people about various projects, recruiting, buildings, real estate, whatever. And in that conversation, the topic comes up, council is very interested in hearing what you have to say. So there could be a, a meeting that's convened at a city building, perhaps for the purposes of conducting other business with those specific people one at a time. And the members of council that happen to be on this little committee or task force are invited in the room for that. Would it be possible to do it in that way?
I think you make a good point. I think that the hard part there is then you've only got a subset of council that gets to be exposed to those folks and have those conversations. And I know, and that just feels like, oh, that's a bummer, unless you're going to rotate people, which is fine too. But I think we need to figure out what we want before we figure out the mechanism for getting them to the table. You know, I, I don't think what, what Greg was saying was a whole lot different than what I was saying. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that, you know, I, I think that to, to Greg's point, we, we've got to have a variety of folks, particularly from our smaller, um, businesses and our medium-sized businesses, because they're the ones really driving the whole thing. And not that I want to take anything away from our larger employers. They are so needed and, you know, so thankful we have them. But we may have better opportunities for successful interactions with some of our, our smaller, um, companies, CEOs and COOs and, and, you know, C-suite folks, um, to begin with. And maybe that's where we need to start it from. I don't know.
So how about this as a, as a go-forward here? My, my hope this evening was not to necessarily solve the hows, but instead to say, do we have some shared vision of what we're trying to do collectively? And so I think the end game, it's from what I'm hearing, that we have a shared vision and we want to learn from them. We, we want to have a relationship engaged. So I think we have some, um, shared views on that. Perhaps the next steps would be to bring forth some ideas that, as a part of a work session and see if we can move this. We have collectively as a group talked about this for at least three years. So the hope now is to see if we can maybe at, at a work session then talk more about the mechanics and bring forth, forth that, forward some ideas or thoughts. Not sure we're going to solve it tonight. So I'm sort of looking at, you know, what would be a logical next step towards advancing this? Does that seem like a fair suggestion or do other folks have other suggestions?
No, you know what? I think this is a fair suggestion, but I think, um, what really would draw CEOs into this discussion is what, what can we do?
But I think what really would draw CEOs into this discussion is what what can we do for you to make this government better? I think we're all going to be shocked when we find out the kind of businesses that are run here, the quality, who they are. A lot of them are just really under the radar. And I think one time I had the opportunity, the Vice President of the United States called up, said, what can you what can you do as a what can we do, the federal government, to make this government better for you small business guys with 500 employees or so? And I mean, that was an entree to go take your time out and go meet with the Vice President. And and as the guy sat there, he took notes. And actually, they implemented those tax changes and everything else in the federal government. It was amazing. So that's the kind of approach I think you need for somebody who's really busy and you wanted them to be interested in your organization, AKA the city of Dublin. So that's the approach I think we have to take with these people because they are busy. And as everyone said, last thing they want to do is get on another committee and waste their time. So that's my two cents on this. Thank you.
Okay. You know, Kathy, the the gentleman that came forward and and volunteered to help us, that would be an opportunity to ask him to sit with us during one of these conversations because that insight might be helpful in trying to figure out just exactly what shape this this all comes and takes. I agree with Greg. I think it's about building relationships. When I think about some of the great relationships like with Mr. Hidaka that over the years that have occurred, those kinds of things to create a loyalty and an understanding that we are actually partners, whatever, it it doesn't have to be a boring advisory group. It's really about building relationships and listening. And whatever that whatever avenue we can go down that will allow us to do that is the right avenue.
Great. Okay, um, so why don't we circle back around and figure out a venue for going for moving forward? How's that sound? But we have can we have agreement that this is something we would like to do? I'm looking for nods. Okay, all righty. And that, Chris, I'm done with admin. So thank you all. I know it was a lot this evening. Thank you.
Sure you don't have anything else to add?
Just you wait.
Okay, uh, Community Development Committee, John.
Hey, the Community Development Committee met on March 23rd and heard an update on Bridge Park from Crawford Hoying's principal and founder Brent Crawford. And just in synopsis, I would say it was a very positive report for some company that went through a heavy COVID period. And I think we were pleased and it sounded like almost in all aspects of his operation, there was success. Jenny Rousch also provided an overview of the planning division's activities and performance metrics, which is very interesting. The committee considered the topic of maintenance of historically significant stone walls. Staff discussed the results of the 216 Historic and Cultural Assessment that provides detailed information about locally surveyed stone walls, including physical conditions, historical integrity, historical significance, location relative to right of ways and wall types of construction and mythology. Staff has integrated all the information from the assessment and asset management inventory into a really good GIS program. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it's really well done. A majority of the stone walls are located in public right of ways. However, some are located on private property and some have sections varying between public right of ways and private property. Staff contracted the Dublin Historical Society for their advice regarding the maintenance of these historic stone walls. And the society's president, Tom Holton, provided valuable input to the committee for their consideration. The recently approved Historic Dublin Zoning Code amendments and draft Historic Design Guidelines provided regulations and guidance on the historic stone walls, which apply to private property and city owned parcels located within the historic district boundary or on Apex G. This guidance does not apply to walls that are located in the public right of way. The committee discussed the maintenance responsibility practices and the process for historically significant stone walls that are located in the public right of way. Staff provided a memo and presentation with the details of the topics and considerations in council's packet for this evening. The committee unanimously recommended to city council to direct staff to incorporate the following maintenance practices into the city's infrastructure asset management program. In instances of historically significant walls that have sections varying between public right of ways and private property, the city will maintain the portions that is located in the public right of way. And the maintenance guide guidance that is outlined in the recently approved Historic Dublin Zoning Code amendments and draft Historic Design Guidelines for Historically Significant Stone Walls on Private Property and City Owned Parcels Located Within the Historic District Boundary or on Apex G will be applied to the Historically Significant Stone Walls that are located in the public right of way. Staff will obtain guidance from the Architectural Review Board when performing significant maintenance and reconstruction of Historically Significant Stone Walls located in the public right of way. So what I'd like to ask is a motion to accept the recommendations of the Community Development Committee with regard to the maintenance of the historical stone walls.
John, I'd like to make one clarification before we do that. And I I would like to check your and Andy. I don't have the meeting minutes from this meeting yet. But it was my recollection that we said that the city would maintain the walls that were on public property and private property. If they meandered back and forth along the line, it was my understanding that we decided that the city would maintain the entirety of that wall. If it meandered two feet over into private property and then two feet back into the right of way, that that was going to that that was something we were going to maintain. Again, I haven't seen the meeting minutes yet from that meeting. It's probably my own fault. I'm sure they're out there somewhere. But I wanted to check and see if your recollection was similar to mine.
You know, Chris, that's true, because if you break it all down, this rather lengthy report, it was basically if it's on private property, the private homeowner will maintain them. If it's a meandering wall that crisscrosses both private and public, we will take care of it. And if it's on our public right of way, we will take care of it. That's a nice synopsis of what we're asking you to vote on.
Well, that's not what this says. So we're going to need to clarify that that language because it it says that if it's on public property, then we'll maintain it. If it's on private property, we won't. But I see Megan just chimed in and maybe she has some information for us.
Well, we had actually gone back and watched that portion of the meeting several times. And our interpretation is what was referenced in the memo. But since you raised that, we do actually prefer. And we think that it would be best for those walls if the city did maintain the the walls that did meander from private from private to public property. So if we want to revise that recommendation, staff would be supportive of that, and that would make sense in line with our asset management protocol.
Megan, I think that was the intent, really.
Okay.
I really do. So if we can get, yep, if we can get a vote on that recommendation, it'd be appreciated.
Jane, you have a question?
I do have a question. I just want to be sure that as and I agree with all of this, so I I'm with you. A couple of suggestions. One, when it comes to having professionals do it, I've noticed that when some professionals have maintained some of these stone walls, they have not done it historically accurate. They've mortared the uprights where the old stone walls aren't mortared. They they are dry laid in an upright fashion and they and they look more realistic and they look more authentic. So one, that. And then secondly, on all of us who own stone walls on our property, and I have a ton of them on mine. And I've learned how to lay dry laid stone walls. You'd actually be very proud of me, John. I would really like to see, and I don't know if this is possible, but I would really like to see a video on our website on how how to repair a stone wall. And I'm sure that we could, you know, we could either make one ourselves or we can find a video that we can utilize because we we a lot of us have stone walls on the property and we don't know how to maintain them or how to rebuild them. And it would be very nice to have an an easy video that's available on the city website. So they're actually very fun to do, and I think people would find most a lot of joy in putting one back together. So other than that, that's all I have to say.
There is a book, Jane, on this that's actually published by an Irishman on how to do it. So and he's and it's very clear. So I haven't seen a video yet on it, but that'd be a great suggestion.
We might even have a we might even have an older stonemason around here that might want to volunteer their time while we can make that video of our own, so.
We have two Irishmen who are actually very adroit at this, who one actually sings in one of our bands at the Irish Festival.
Okay, well, you need to.
We have to trot them out and you can film them.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, Megan, you have some revised language for us, I am thinking.
So we can revise that language to say that those meandering walls will be the city's responsibility. Just as a reminder, though, and as we discussed during that committee meeting, that will require the city to obtain some rights to perform that maintenance on on private property. So we'll need to either acquire maintenance easements or rates of entries anytime that we need to do that work.
Okay.
Well, i- if that is then the direction, then I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Community Development Committee.
I'll second.
Great. Jenny, would you please call the role?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, the committee went on to discuss the topic of allowing chickens in residential areas. Staff shared three options. Keep the current regulations that only permit chickens on rural zone properties. Amend the code to permit them in residential areas or amend the code to require a special permit. The committee discussed the options, the provisions that could be included if a code modification would be considered and the potential challenges that may arise if a code modification was considered. In the end, the committee recommended two to one to the city council to consider an amendment to the code to allow chickens in residential areas. Should council determine this amendment and pursue it, we would probably forward it to the PZ PZC unless someone else would be interested in seeing it go to another committee. So we are opening that for discussion for the whole council.
So is the discussion, just to be clear, are we for urban chickens or what is this?
Yeah, the committee suggested two to one that we look at this. Now, what what we're really looking for on this, Kathy, is to find a piece of legislation that we think can satiate everybody on how this is done. As you know, all the larger cities have already passed this, New York, Cleveland, I think, and everybody else. But it's very important how the process be handled so that there's no mess. There's order to this. The number of chickens is limited. They're all female. So that is what we're suggesting possibly. We get a more refined piece of legislation that we can all agree on. So we're actually tonight, we're we're having a motion to accept the recommendations of the committee to continue on in this search.
I don't know. I mean, we couldn't even agree on how to move forward with electric scooters. I I just I think this is a Pandora's box. Look, I I think the chickens are very cool. I have lots of friends who have them because they, you know, live in areas where it's really conducive to them having them. And I think they're awesome. I ju I I feel like it's it would be a really difficult thing for us to regulate this. I just I just do. You can say they have to be all female. You can say you can only have X number. But as soon as one person has one more than they're supposed to have, then there's an issue with the neighbor or the one person doesn't have just a female. It's I I would not be in for of 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 us changing things at this point. I just think we've lived with this like it is for so long. If we can't agree on scooters, I just don't see how we're going to agree on chickens.
Well, Christine, to that, there is 10 jillion cities in America that have already figured this out. And I actually lived with somebody for a week that actually had these chickens.
Jerry.
No.
But we don't live in cities. We live in this one.
No, I know.
All right, let's make sure we hear everyone's voices and and then we can move forward from there. I I saw Jane had her hand up.
Right, you know, I I have to agree with Christina. Enforcement for us right now is difficult enough with all the new regulations that we've put down. We've got property maintenance vacant. There's 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 so many. And this is a prime opportunity that if we were to have some real time communication with our residents and can survey as to whether or not people in this city really wanted chickens, might be one thing. But to just to do that now and change it from rural, I I think is is right. She's right. Where I think we're opening up a little Pandora's box. And I haven't heard anything from our own wildlife expert on whether or not this is a good idea. So I I understand where John's coming from. I know they have him in the city of Columbus and they do sound like a lot of fun. But I also think they come with a lot of challenges. So right now, I'm not ready for changing the regulation. But I would like to hear a little bit more from maybe some experts on whether or not this is a good idea and our community as whether or not they even want it. That's what I have to say.
Yeah, Kathy.
Yeah, um, I I grew up around chickens. I don't know anybody else here grow up around chickens? Yeah, so, um, chickens, one of the things about chickens is they attract predators. And that is coyotes, skunks, opossums, hawks, owls, et cetera, so forth. And I know that's a that's been a challenge that I've heard from residents. I've not heard anybody want chickens, but I've heard many residents say the coyote populations are are growing, the fox populations are growing, the skunk populations are growing. And if there's chickens that that doesn't help that situation, whether it's some one of the predators after their eggs, et cetera. Having grown up around chickens, even the hens are noisy. When they laying eggs, they are and, you know, in in the city, that's going to be a challenge. And I I think the the ongoing, what it would take to actually manage this from a neighbor to neighbor would would be a real issue. And then also having grown around chickens, if those coops and they would have to be in coops versus free range are not cleaned, it creates problems. Now, if they're cleaned, it doesn't. But again, the ongoing problems and the enforcement with this. I mean, we've spent time as this council talking about how small these lots are now getting too small to put a patio in. I just I I think it's just too much of a challenge. So I I have not heard a request, but I've heard a lot of requests about concerns about, you know, coyotes, et cetera, so forth. And and we're our advice is, you know, don't feed them, don't be around them. And I I think this would would create some challenges. So I I I would be no no one that no on chickens at this time.
Yeah, Greg.
You know, John and I have been, I've been, I haven't been on council as long as him, but I've been on for quite a while. And and I'm not sure how this issue comes up, but it comes up from time to time. And I've always kind of felt like it's a solution in search of a problem. I mean, I don't know, and maybe I could be wrong. And this, I know the six of you and the seven of us collectively are pretty open to what the community wants and listening to people's concerns and things like that. So I wouldn't necessarily be offended if one of our committees had a hearing, I guess, and and blushed this out. But I wouldn't want to send it to a committee with the idea that our intention is for legislation to be passed that changes the way things are. You know, we always listen and it just doesn't seem to me that maybe this is that big of an of an issue. Maybe there are a two, maybe my mailbox, my email box is going to get full of chicken lovers in the community. You know, that may change my mind. It just seems to me, like Chris says, you know, the law of unintended consequences. If we sort of start down this road because it seems like sort of a feel good, what's the harm sort of thing, we could open ourselves up to some problems. So I I I guess if a commit, one of our boards and commissions wanted to look at it and talk about it, I guess I'm not opposed to that conversation, but I'm certainly not wanting to send their direction with a sort of a passive inherent steal of approval on it.
Well, I was the no and the two, I was the one in the two to one vote. You know, we have sent this to committee. It's been through CSAC. It's been through a number of things. And that and, you know, then it wound up back on on our committee so that we, you know, would could try either lift it up or put it to bed. And, you know, I think we ask so much of our HOA people and presidents and things like that. And so many of the deed restrictions and so on and so forth really don't address chickens. And I I think for every happy person, you're going to make at least a dozen unhappy people. You know, we regulate where you can put your swing set, right? It doesn't make any noise and doesn't all of the things that chickens do. But yet we're going to allow a a mobile coop or something of that nature to be pushed around in the same area that we don't even allow a swing set. So I I I just think it's a it's a tall order for our. So I, I just think it's a tall order for our HOAs and enforcement and trying to change their deed restrictions and doing those kinds of things, and I'm just not sure.
It would be an interesting question to throw out at the Spring Neighborhood Meeting and just to kind of see what kind of response you get. Because I would be, I would be surprised if we got a strong response for chickens. I guess I would. And this is where I think certain citizens is helpful. I mean, we're like Greg says, I think it's a, it's a solution looking for a problem, so.
I think it's pretty clear what the consensus is here, but I'm just going to say a couple of things anyway. I find it interesting that a couple of our council members have had chickens. And I would wonder, as crazy as it sounds, how caring for chickens as a child might have affected how you turned out as an adult. I believe 4H is a fantastic program. It's wholesome, it teaches people to take care of things, nurture things, respect for nature. You know, this is 2021. We talk about sustainability, self-sufficiency, and things like that. Chickens are something that would accomplish that goal. And let's face it, there's probably five or 10 people in the entire city that would ever even have chickens. The way that the regulations should be written to avoid the issues that you have, the concerns that you have, the concerns that a neighbor, a neighbor would have, or an HOA leader would have, would restrict it to the point where most people would not be able to even have chickens. 150 feet to the nearest home is one. Five chickens per parcel, all hens in a contained building, no free range. So you know, the concern about attracting predators, predators are attracted when they think they can get something. If they can't get to it, they move on their way. The noise, hens make noise. But if you're 150 feet from the coop, again, it's not a big deal. There are probably five or 10 people in the city that want it. They may not ever even be able to qualify to actually have them. So I'm sort of preaching for no point here. But I just, at Austin, Nashville, Clintonville, progressive cities allow chickens. And I think that if written properly, it can be done. But it's a, it's a no starter now, so we can move on.
Now, you know, Andy, I agree with you because it's the one urban sort of farm animal that people can actually have, where kids have responsibility every day. They don't have paper routes anymore. Somebody throws a paper route, and it's probably their parents in a car in the morning. Chickens require a certain amount of care. I totally agree with you. It's something that's very developmentally important for our young people. So I think it's a very good thing. I, and also, just listening to the conversation, I can tell that maybe our co-members aren't familiar with the kind of chicken things there are today, like omelet, who comes as a kid, very well executed. You'd have to know something about this or have worked with people who have these kind of chickens in their backyards. I see them in Clintonville, I see them all over. And yes, all progressive communities have pretty much adopted this. And the young folks, they're in their twenties and thirties, are sort of into it. So there is a lot of benefit to this and not a lot of fallback on it. So I think it's just a neat thing to do. Probably one of the sad days in city council was when four or five kids came in with their parents, and we told them we had to take the chickens away from them. And it was one of the darkest days in city council for me, probably along with the guy who had, the Asian gentleman who had a carrier pigeon in his backyard. And we made him, we took that away from him, and that was a cultural thing and so important to him. So I think it's time we kicked it up a little bit here and got on the program with these other cities. Who are we to say, oh, we're so special, we're still allowed chickens? When, as you said, Andy, which is totally true, all the progressive cities and the younger people are somewhat interested in this. And so that's my take on it. I think we're probably doing, and as you said, there might not be very many people that have them. But once you write the laws, it's so restrictive that there's really no foul in the chicken world as far as your neighbors are concerned. So I mean, I know, I feel like we're backwards again, and we're backsliding again and not being the progressive city that we always really want to be. So, and that's my take on it. So I, that's my two cents. And there's a heck of a lot of niceness about giving your neighbors eggs because these chickens start producing eggs like crazy. I've watched this, I actually moved in with a family that was doing this. And I watched the kids cuddling the chickens, taking care of the chickens, the responsibility of taking care of the chickens. And it was all good. And it wasn't messy, and it didn't draw mice. And the way they do it nowadays, these kits that these people buy that you see in Clintonville are very progressive, and they're all well put together. And I think probably maybe some of our members don't really understand exactly how this is done today in the 21st century, so that you can have three chickens. And a lot of the city codes.
John, do you have anything further from the Community Development Committee?
No.
Okay. Any other thoughts on chickens? Okay, there, on the, John, I don't know, on your agenda, there was a request for a motion, a vote in a motion? Do you want to?
It's either to send it on for further study, or that was the request for the motion.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to make it in the affirmative, just so we can have an official vote on this. I'll make it in the affirmative. I move that we do not, okay, I move to direct staff to draft legislation regarding allowing chickens within the city. So voting yes would be a directive to have staff move forward, and voting no would direct them not to move forward. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thanks, John. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
No.
Mayor M. Rose Grooms?
No.
Vice Mayor DeRosa? Mr. Peterson?
No.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
No.
Anything further from the Community Development Committee, John?
No, that's it, that winds it up, thank you very much.
Thank you, Finance Committee, Christina.
You thought their reports were long? Golly, we're in for it. I'm kidding, I have nothing, we meet on the 19th.
Oh, well, we did just have April Fool's Day, so good on you, Christina. Okay, Public Services, Jane?
We've had a couple of meetings, I'll try to make this quick. We did get a staff update on police and court services, and thanks for the chief and our court services staff on that update. It was very informative. But, but I think that we've all been pretty well updated on what's going on in the police department. Matt Erman gave a presentation on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update, which was fascinating. They're undergoing an update of the existing plan that was formulated in 2010, which has been extremely comprehensive and has guided this city in the last 10 years in all aspects of planning and programming for the parks. I'll just give you a quick going forward. They will be looking at expanding virtual programming, repurposing existing recreation amenities, reimagining park design, looking at new parkland acquisition, any kind of regional partnership, philanthropic opportunities, assessing our current assets and our strengths and weaknesses, and engaging the community in the future planning. Then they will be looking at developing a new implementation plan, looking at a budget request, and initiating a new update, which I think is going to be fascinating as they look at things like esports and autonomous maintenance equipment and downloadable virtual recreation content and all sorts of non-traditional forms of recreation. So the other thing that came forward on Public Services was the bridge parapet. Now, this is, I'm only going to tell you about this because it's kind of interesting. The bridge parapet over I-270 has the relief that says Dublin and also a rope design, and it isn't very visible. And this has gone back and forth with Public Services about whether or not to paint it a color and whatever. The last meeting we had, we were offered four paint colors, different colors of green, one was red. None of us really liked any of them. But I look back, or I asked for the earlier minutes when we did have the opportunity to look at sealing and staining the word Dublin. And I know that Paul Hammer Smith gave, came forward with this. I don't know where we're going to go with this because Public Services could not make a recommendation on what to do with it. I, ODOT requires that any paint matches the color of the metal underbridge, which is why the paint selections were looked at. But I do think that we have not come up with a good solution. At least that's been the perspective of both meetings on making this relief more visible. So I guess at this point, we're at an impasse. And we can leave it alone, or we can continue to look at getting some sort of a sample of a sealed or stained image to see what, if that is going to give us the kind of depth and dimension we're looking for. So I'm open to suggestions because we're not getting very far with this.
Jane, I'm going to disagree with you on that because I thought the two green suggestions by the staff were excellent. I think, I'm almost embarrassed by the fact that it's been, I don't know how many years, this thing's been kicked down the road in government and can. And, you know, you drive under the Dublin bridges, which are very attractive. You go through Dublin, you're going around the outer belt, you don't even know you're in Dublin. You have embossed up there in cement the same color as the cement, the word Dublin. You go down the freeway a slight way, and you see Worthington in giant letters running all the way across the bridge. You know you're in Worthington. So if we can't come to some kind of solution and paint the word Dublin and the stripes, which were very cool, I thought. So at least when you're going around the outer belt and you're coming from Missouri, or going to Florida, or whatever you're doing, you actually remember passing through a place called Dublin. And that's why it's damn important to paint that thing out. And I agree with the staff, I thought the two green colors were the best. And you know, it's embarrassing to me that we have waited years to finally get to this point and still haven't even been able to resolve our own nomenclature on the bridge as people pass through our town. So no, I'm all for painting the bridge out and the two green colors, not the red one and not the gray one. But I thought both of those colors were very attractive. And I think it's an embarrassment, as cool as a city is, and as neat as a city is, that when you go through it, you don't even know you went through it. So on a major freeway. So no, it's time to get off the can and get this job done. So I'm just a total disagreement on that, no.
The one thing I will say, John, and it was, it was brought up in the meeting, and I think I brought it up, that the ability to seal it or stain it and give it that kind of dimension. And we were told that we couldn't do it. But this, the earlier meeting says that that was possible either for a price of $10,000 or $15,000, depending on how much you want to do. So that option wasn't offered this time, even though that's available. And I wonder if that would give a better depth, if that would, if you wouldn't have to worry about the paint washing off with the weather. So that's where I think I'm at a loss because there are other options, but we're not actually pursuing them.
Yeah, we haven't done what other cities have done on their freeway bridges, which ODOT now has allowed. They have giant letters telling you you're in obets in places. We've been very subtle, and if we even paint that small lettering of Dublin and the stripes, it will still be very subtle and very sophisticated compared to every other city that's got four and six-foot letters on their bridges. So no, I'm embarrassed that this thing hasn't been accomplished, I really am.
So Jane, maybe we'll ask staff to clarify whether the stain would work or not. If the stain works, we have some options. If not, then, then, then we're in a different place. But perhaps we could just get some clarification on that. Does that seem like a go-forward? Okay.
Okay, anything else, Jane?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, that brings us to Cota. Kathy?
Yeah, I do this evening. I know it's been a long evening, but my three-year term on the Cota board concluded on March 31st. And as you probably know, central Ohio municipalities have rotating representation on the Cota board. Dublin has a spot every 12 years. So nine years from now, we will be back on the board. And I just have to say, it's been such a real pleasure and an honor to be able to represent Dublin on that board. And it has been a great time to serve. Not only has it been a time of significant innovation and mobility, and we could, you know, spend some time listing those from the adoption of electric vehicles to the rideshare programs that we're involved with, to the new mobile apps that have happened, to the smart city initiatives. I mean, all of that has happened just in the last three to five years. So that, and along with, as you know, significant planning with our regional partners on what we're going to do in our major corridors. It really is hard to imagine that all that happened in the last three years. But as I was reflecting on it, it just really has been a time, and I know it's only going to accelerate. But the time on the board was also marked by the, probably the most challenging year in Cota's history, and that is when the pandemic hit. Certainly not only changed the way we worked and learned, but it changed how we traveled. And what didn't change, though, was the need to have reliable transportation. And like, unlike so many, unlike so many cities across the country, Cota never closed down. They kept those services running consistently. Yes, they had to modify some of them, but they made sure there was an option for people to get to work or medical care, or even the grocery. And so I really want to applaud their work, and that work is still ongoing. But they figured out just how to, you know, make it work, including not charging residents and riders and customers for many months during that process. So it was a very challenging time, and the team deserves such credit. So it really has been an honor to serve on that board. There's great leadership there. We have a great relationship with Cota. Some recent staffers that have, that are now on Cota and just a great working relationship. And I know that even though we don't have board representation, we're going to continue to do important things together. Because as we've talked as this group, mobility is critical, and we're headed into a really great time. So this will be my last Cota report, but I'll keep folks updated as we move forward. And thank you very much for the honor to serve on that board.
Well, I'm sure that they were so appreciative to have you, and I'm certain that you did wonderful work there. So, you know, who knows, 12 years goes by pretty quick, maybe you'll have another crack at it. Okay, Logan Union Champagne. Andy?
Nothing to report.
Oh, I skipped myself on a Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. I would just like to say that we had the state of the region. I trust some of you attended or at least heard bits and pieces of that. They're really doing great work at Morpsey, and it's going to be an exciting year with some of the studies that are underway, particularly as it relates to the Greenways and things like that. And we have started a discussion on Blue Ways, which will be heavily impactful for the city of Dublin and the River Corridor and things like that as well. So 33 corridor, Kathy, Andy?
Yeah, we had a meeting last Friday, April the 9th. Members of the group, we spent time reviewing and discussing the very significant and vibrant Japanese business communities that are represented up and down the smart corridor from Dublin to Marysville and beyond. As you probably know, there are more than 16 Japan, 60, six zero, Japanese-owned businesses in and along that corridor, and more than 25 of those in Dublin. Of course, like everything else, Cota has made it really difficult for the important trade missions that the region has, you know, traditionally done, conferences and programs that have been so impactful. But as we move forward, we spent time in the group exploring some ideas about how we could collectively engage more as we, as we, you know, return more to what we call normal times. And we're going to continue that dialogue at our June meeting. As is our practice, you know, we did the roundtable of what's happening for developments in transportation in the region. I continue to be impressed at just, there's just been no slowing down. Things continue to grow up and down that region, including advancements at the Marysville Innovation Park and the recently announced Innovation Park in Jerome Township. And then finally, the group decided. Um, and then finally, with the group decided, um, we're going to spend some time doing an inventory of the long-range plans that folks are doing, including the Dublin 35 Plan. So we're going to spend some time collectively talking about that over the next few months and seeing how we can work, uh, together. So did I miss anything, Andy? You're, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, guys. Um, only, the only teeny little element, there's a, an autonomous shuttle that is going to be starting up in Marysville. I think it's pretty cool. Um, hopefully one day Dublin will get there. It's, uh, a shuttle that'll be running between senior centers and retail and commercial. Um, so we'll see how that goes and maybe, um, we can get on the list here in the next couple of years.
Great. Thank you both for, for doing that work. Arts Council, John? I think he's back. Back to that. On my screen, it shows that he's not there, so I'll come back. Board of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Washington Township, Jane?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Bridges, Jane?
Um, uh, the only thing that I'll mention is that, um, as I mentioned before, they have utilized most of the grant money that the city has given through the CARES Act. And then during the, uh, spring, they do, um, a program called Gift for Grads, where they, uh, the Dublin Bridges provides a hundred dollar gift card and a butt cake for students who may not get a gift or a celebration, um, as they graduate. So there is no graduating senior that will not be, uh, they gave about 30 of these out last year for students who would not be celebrated, uh, or were incapable of bringing something to them. And so that's a good thing. And then, uh, it's just nice to note that, uh, every Dublin school, provided by Dublin Bridges, has a personal care pantry, um, that is located in every one of the Dublin schools for any student who would need any kind of, uh, item, uh, for their own personal care. And that's available to all students and provided by Dublin Bridges. Just continue to sign up for their emails and be a partner in their work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Well, I see John is back. We'll circle back. Arts Council, John?
Yes, uh, we're going to have a wishing tree, uh, April the 1st. And if you love golf, we're starting a golf, um, show here in April that will run into early June. So there's going to be a lot of paintings related to golf and you might have to make an appointment to go visit the Art Council Building or, uh, get on the internet and look them up. And, uh, it's going to really be well done and it's well executed. I've seen a lot of the art so far. So something worth, something worth seeing in a very golf-oriented community.
Okay, we'll stick with you on Veterans Committee, John?
Nothing to report.
Right, thank you. Takes us to roundtable, round screen. I will start, uh, top center is Andy on my screen.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Christina?
Uh, nothing, just a quick welcome to Dr. Marshhausen as the new superintendent of Dublin City Schools. Um, he's a good guy. My son actually had his wife as his, uh, as his teacher. Um, a loss for my Hilliard kiddos, but, um, good, good stuff for Dublin, so welcome.
Thank you, Jane.
The only thing that I want to mention, and it's come up here a couple of times tonight. Um, I was, uh, had, uh, good fortune to have lunch with Michelle Crandall over in Hilliard and we were just talking a little bit, uh, and, um, I had told her that I had seen a communication tool that Hilliard is using called Hilliard Talk to Us. And I would love it if our communications department would take a look at that software program. It is a real-time communications tool that is utilized to talk back and forth with our citizens in real time. You can, um, you can send in a comment, you can survey, you can, um, ask questions. It's just a beautiful little tool and it's called Hilliard Talk to Us. So I would love it if we could take a look at something like that for us. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jane. Greg?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. John?
Nothing, thank you. The hour's late, thank you.
Okay, uh, Kathy?
No, nothing. Thank, thanks.
Okay, uh, I, I have nothing further other than, um, you know, we're continuing to watch some of the things going on in the House, in the Senate, and, uh, there's a lot of attention being paid there. So, um, we'll, we'll continue to board some emails that we get as, in summary of those things and keep everyone in the loop as best we can, as far as that goes. Uh, with that, if there's nothing, or nothing more for the good of the order, we will stand adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Chris.